I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to say hi to Monica and Merry Christmas. And in that spirit, we have students from the middle school here, ready to come out and demonstrate to us the great performance they're planning on putting on this weekend. So I will hand it over to our superintendent to introduce.
Certainly. So Dave, would you be able to get Mrs. Beck?
We'll bring her in.
Excellent. So Carol Beck, our middle school nurse, has been our drama director for a very long time, as long as I've been here. And the kids always do a phenomenal job. So we have them coming in. I think they're going to perform one of the songs from the play this weekend, Bah Humbug. And Mrs. Beck, I'm sure, is on her way in bringing them in.
They're coming this morning.
Oh, okay, there we go, that way. So the play is Saturday night at 7:00 and Sunday afternoon matinee at 2:00. Highly recommend.
Our elves are leaving tickets for the show on Sunday morning.
Sure. We're used to bright lights. Come on, join us.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us tonight. My name is Mrs. Beck. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the nurse here at the middle school. I'm also the drama director and advisor to the program, coming on to close to 20 years. This is our 29th production, actually, no, I'm sorry, Mary Poppins was our 29th production. And this will be our 30th production in this winter. This winter, we're doing a show called Bah Humbug, which is a take on Scrooge's Christmas Carol. And we were going to show you the opening of the show tonight, but it's been a very long day for all of us, and we decided to end it with a bang of a show.
Our finale.
And our finale, which is...
Life is meant to live, so it's a good moral for the story. I'd like to also let you know, the club actually started in 2004, and I was talking to some of the kids this week. It was crazy. They told me that's when they were born. The club and a lot of these kids were born at the same time. I've been with Nurse Beck since I was a sophomore here in 2004, and we've been doing the shows ever since. I run the technical side of the shows. Our show is this weekend, here at the middle school, Saturday night at 7:00, Sunday at 2:00. Tickets are still available at the door, everybody. We would love to welcome you in there. Anything else you want to say?
Just at this particular, I'm sorry. This particular number, again, our finale, and it's full of song and dance. So if you really would like to see the full effect, you should probably come to the show. And again, we know where to get your tickets, so you can just let any one of us know, and we'd be happy to give you tickets to come to the show to see the full effect. But you're going to hear the full effect, and one last time for tonight, okay? You ready? All right, here we go.
It's really a thrilling experience. They get to do some of the simulations that astronauts do. They have a microgravity simulation that they get to do. There's some really spectacular things. And Kennedy Space Center has really updated and made sure that what they do is interactive and current. It's just a wonderful experience. So I'm excited for that. One of the things I do want to make mention of, though, when we booked the dates, so originally, we were saying...
Tell me, Scrooge, when's the last time that you left?
Well, I don't seem to recall.
Just listen to this. Ha, 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 ha. Go on, give it a try.
Ha, 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 ha.
Oh, come now, you can do better than that. Listen. Ha, 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 ha. Now, you try it.
Ha, 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 ha.
That's it. I feel you got it. Now sing, Scrooge, sing.
Why, spirits, I feel better already.
That's the idea, Scrooge, that's the idea.
Bravo, boys and girls. Thank you, boys and girls. Bravo. To my fellow school committee members and members of the administration, I hate to say it's all downhill from there.
(Laughter).
We have some important presentations today. We have some heady information to get through. And I think it's important for us to start out with our children, to remind ourselves why we dedicate our time to this endeavor and why we are members of the school committee. Thank you so much, kids, for starting out our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck.
Wonderful performances. Thank you so much. So ladies and gentlemen, I'd actually like to take a couple of items out of order this evening. We also have the National Junior Honor Society presentation on behalf of the middle school as well. And since it's student-involved activity, I would love for us to take that item out of order to allow those students to join us now, and so they can also... Just to allow the teacher to go home in a reasonable hour, so she can turn the students tomorrow morning. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you very much, everyone. Jim?
So I'd just like to introduce Pam Sanford. You can sit me here.
Okay.
So Pam has been looking at National Junior Honor Society for the middle school. So for the past year and a half, I've been attending conferences and bringing back information as to how other middle schools run honor society and how they do it at the national level. Also had meetings with high schools to kind of line up some of the bylaws, so that there's some consistency between the two schools. And I just want to give Pam a lot of credit for her hard work and dedication of bringing this opportunity to the middle school and our kids at the middle school. So thank you, Pam.
We, I thought for a long time that we needed to sort of bring National Junior Honor Society to, so like, I'm from Bridgewater. My students, my kids, my three sons, went through the BR search school system. They always had National Junior Honor Society in their middle school. It was something that encouraged their hard work, their community service, their character, their leadership. And it's a way, I think, to celebrate those kids, not only for their academic achievement, because we do that all the time, but more so for just everything they do, between leadership and scholarship and character. I did, did Mr. DePio send those?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, one of the main ways that the NJHS is run is that it's run by a five-member faculty council. And I've reached out to my colleagues here at the middle school, and I do have a faculty council of five people. Those are the five people that will actually be making the decisions. I sort of coordinate everything, I run the meetings, everything, but they are the ones that are responsible for the decisions. Mr. DePio is not, Mr. Kinnett is not, but these group of people are. And basically, what will happen is, on the day that report cards for Term Two are sent out, which I believe is the 31st of January, once we are, have a solid sense of who is eligible and who is not, that handful of students will be asked down to the auditorium and be told, "You're being invited to apply for the National Junior Honor Society." At that same time, I've worked with Rachel next door, and her, she's going to have a group of students come over to talk to this group of students about what it means to be a person of character, a person of scholarship, a person of, I just lost this, thank you, leadership and community service. And then, within the next five or six weeks, the students will have an opportunity to apply. They'll be getting teacher recommendations, they'll be documenting hours of community service, and then they'll be interviewed, very short interviews, five or so minutes, by the faculty council. Students will be told whether or not they'll be inducted right before April vacation, and induction will happen the week after April vacation. Once they're in the National Junior Honor Society, they'll be expected to come to meetings, they'll be expected to be a part of the group, and be participants in the Honor Society community service activities that we do. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Pam?
Pam, one question. Is this great for seventh graders?
Seventh and eighth.
And eighth, we have both now, okay.
Seventh and eighth. And, oh, a couple of things I want to mention. If seventh graders, for some reason, aren't inducted as seventh graders, they are more than welcome to be inducted as eighth graders. And everybody, whether they are asked to be inducted, seventh or eighth or not, it does not preclude them from being entered into the National Junior Honor Society in high school. So nothing that happens here in this building affects what goes on at the high school in terms of their acceptance or non-acceptance.
Pam, thank you so much for the information. And I think, under the realm of site-based management, Jim, this would be well within your purview to do even without the school committee's blessing, but I would like to make a motion, taking chairs proactively, to support the formation of the National Junior Honor Society here at Silver Lake Regional Middle School.
I'll make a motion.
You want to take the motion? Ed has the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for all the effort and time that you've put into this.
No problem.
It can only benefit our students, and we really deeply appreciate that.
And as a school committee, I welcome, and I have a letter I'm drafting to my colleagues, if, this is our first year, if there's anything you're seeing us do, or anything you have questions about, or concerns about, please don't hesitate to reach out. And I welcome any and all feedback.
We appreciate that.
What type of service project-type stuff do you do?
That's something we're looking at, and that's something we'll decide as a faculty council. But I know one thing we're looking at for next year is running the thing that happened today, the...
The holiday hit stop party.
Holiday.
It's a noble event. It's great.
It's an unbelievable event, and it really would take our junior honor society and put them in the right place, because that's such a feel-good event, because you're giving back to the community during the holiday season. And those are the things that we want to see opportunities for this organization, so...
Pam, could you please pass on our thanks also to the faculty members who have volunteered to be part of your council?
I'll be here, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Appreciate it.
There's two more items I would ask the school committee to take out of order. We have two special education presentations tonight. One of our presentations tonight is going to be discussing a program that services our students who are in the 18 to 22, 21-plus programs. As many of you know, that special ed, in some circumstances, extends beyond what would be a traditional graduation age. And we have an in-house program now to keep our students here in their local community. And we also have Marie to give some information, a general overview of the entire projects that she's been working on since she's been our director of special ed. So do I have a motion to take those two presentations out of order?
It's removed.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Marie, do you want to begin the introductions?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Laura Courage. She is our program instructor for the brand-new Pathways Program servicing students 18 to 22, and she's been doing a phenomenal job, absolutely phenomenal. So we're very excited about her presentation tonight. I just want to make sure it's all queued up. You have mine on there? That's mine.
Oh, that is?
Yeah, that comes next.
So I'll start while they're getting the tech going and try to make a deal with Pathways, because I know you have a lot on your agenda. But as Marie said, I'm coordinating the Pathways Program, which is 18 to 22, for young adults with disabilities and intellectual autism. We have seven students that participate in the program, and our focus is really helping motivate them and get them ready for what adulthood has in store. So increasing independence, vocational aptitudes, and, you know, building community citizenship and community connection. So those are really the big practices that we're working on. You guys have done an amazing job, and the students I have, they have come through your system, and they are respectful, thoughtful, amazing, engaging. They get to see lots of pictures, and they quickly go through.
Can you multitask?
What? Yes, I can multitask.
Because you closed, I think you closed down your presentation.
I can multitask. So technology, technology.
Can I give you a little bit of a segue here?
Yes, absolutely.
So when we were interviewing Marie to take on the position of director of special ed here in Silver Lake, one of the areas of concern we had was out-of-district placements for our special ed students. Luckily, we are members of the Culinary Collaborative, and currently, the programs there cost us above $54,000 per student. Some private placements where students receive instruction that they need to advance to their fullest potential can cost $100,000 a month. When we were looking at Marie's past tenure, at her previous job, we noticed that she had created some in-district programs that were specialized spaces for students, to try and keep those kids as close to the community as possible, and also to save the district some money at the same time. So tonight's presentation is the fruit of Marie's vision, when we hired her and brought her on board here in Silver Lake. So we're really excited to see where this program has gone, and how our students are faring here at Pathways, as close to their community as possible.
And it is really wonderful, because the young adults we have are excited to be able to stay in their community, and also to have summer services in the community. They've been going to North River, and it's been a wonderful experience for them there, but they want to be home. You know, they meet, they get to meet people closer to where they live, they get to find jobs that are places that they could actually get to, and they really get to be more involved in what's happening within our region. Not that Rockland was that far away, but it was far enough away, especially if you can imagine, many of my young adults do not drive. Some will never drive, and some, we hope, will be able to encourage them to continue to taking the driver's test and to taking driver's ed. So we named the program Pathways, for obvious reasons. And we're really promoting vocational skills, community living skills, community connections, social skills, healthy living skills. A lot of young adults with disabilities tend to get a little isolated, and they don't get the same connections and social opportunities as others, and they tend to get a little, get out of the house as much. So it's really important that we promote this healthy living piece. And money management, we all know what important that is in our everyday lives. So we treat them as young adults, they do not call me Mrs. Courage. They call me Laura. They call my job coach, Carol. They are no longer considered high school students, they're considered Silver Lake community members. We want them to have a voice and a choice. They are directing their IEPs, and we're connecting them with all the community connections that they have to offer, Mass, Massachusetts Rebleation Commission, Department Developmental Services, also the national community supports like libraries, one-stop career centers, and things along those lines. They're all capable of working or volunteering. We believe in them, and we build all our skills through kind of internships and experiential. We do a lot of experiential work. So Peter Semper, please. As I said, we have seven. Five are full-time, and two are part-time. Two go to the ICE program with Bridgewater State University. Bridgewater has an inclusive concurrent enrollment program for students with disabilities. We have an incredible relationship with Wingate Healthcare in Yonohama Lake Street across the inlet Silver Lake. We are working in all these different areas, three days a week. We kind of have our own little work program going in food services, doing waitressing, dishwashing, help cooking. We actually have maintenance and activities. And we all know that those industries still have a high projected growth rate, so there's going to be jobs there, and that's really, really important, especially when you think about senior facilities and kind of the increase in our elderly population. So this is some pictures of them working, doing their thing. Food prep, some of my guys really want to be chefs, so it's really great to see some of them being able to use these skills. Maintenance, one of my guys said, "I do not want to touch food," Laura, "Keep me awake in food and the dishwasher." So I said, "Okay, we'll find something." Body services. Activities, they're doing everything, like, they coordinate the activities with the residents. So they'll do painting, they'll, they've done baking with them, they've done, they do burrito, all kinds of fun activities, which is wonderful. And there's two memory care units there. So it's wonderful, too, because I think the residents are getting a lot out of it, from their excitement and enthusiasm. So this is Carver Public Library, this is another one of our citizenship kind of volunteer experiences that we do. We're also at the Carver Department of Public Works right now, where we're doing landscaping and maintenance. And we're at Public Pet Project in Clement, which is a pet store that also has an adoption center. So they're learning the ins and outs of retail and, you know, animal care and so on those lines, register. So we are also measuring everything that we're doing, so we're seeing how their growth is. And the way that we do that is we use some Google forms that they get via their phone that we send them. Every day, they, we track, like, okay, did you do this? Did you need help with this? What is your advice? And then we do this form also. So this is a way of us to try to help teach them how to kind of measure their own progress, and what they're doing independently, and what they're not, and how to help teach them what they can do better next time. So we're doing this, and they're doing this. My biggest thing, it's just as important as vocational things, everyone needs a friend. Everyone needs a friend. So social skills is huge in what we do. I'm very lucky, because I've worked in this arena before, I have lots of friends that run programs like this. So we are going out and meeting with the other postprograms that are similar to us. Lots of communities, Pembroke, Duxbury, Forn, have similar programs, and we need them to have other connections, because, you know, we have a small cohort here, but there's a larger world that's not that far from us that we need to build. So, and of course, our friends at Silver Lake, we're still always doing things at Silver Lake to kind of promote with our developmental learning centers, do a lot of cooking skills, some community connections. The Bridgewater ICE program, which we talked about, more cooking. Doesn't look very healthy, but we can talk about health. We do some healthy things. And then Western Y, it's on Friday, and you know the Y is obviously a perfect community venue. So they've, they've done some working out, they've done some fitness profiles, and we've also met with some of the other programs over at the Y, so they have some friends to do that with. More community out there. Another thing, this is for our community outing, our rating scale, different things that they needed to see that they were following. So, and yeah, and for our volunteer sites and our job sites, you know, these are pretty much, I think the only one I don't have there, Carver Public Libraries, I've got the picture in the corner, Public Pet Project, Wingate, how many cars are there? After we did a 12-week training course, we're really lucky, there's a doctor travel trainer. She came in and taught us everything from, from, you know, one of the social norms when you ride the bus, you can't talk to people. You really can't talk to people. To, to, how do you, how do you read the bus schedule? To, oh my goodness, like, I can't find my pass, what do I do? Or how do I, if I don't have exact change? You know, and we did a couple trips with her, which was wonderful, you know? It's, it's, having a friend, a job, a desire to engage in the community is moot if you cannot pay for it. So really, transportation is just really critical. And yeah, those are the, those are the main things. So hopefully that covers students, or covers it all. Thank you very much for your time.
You know, I have to say, you know, it's one of the programs that people are most proud of. I mean, you can see how happy the kids are, and Laura has just been fantastic. I mean, her enthusiasm is contagious, obviously. So, you know, we, she could have gone on for an hour, but I did ask her, so it's my fault to sort of try to keep her, because you have quite a few things going on this evening, but she's phenomenal.
I will say that, you know, most presentations at school committee, you're not sad when they're too short. I would have listened to more. Really, really great. Thank you.
I think it's a great program, so it's awesome. It's great to see. You know, my only concern is, they look like they're really well-prepared for when they're done with the program.
Yeah. Nice to go. And they'll be with us for a while, so we have a lot of opportunity to really teach them a variety of things. You know, we've been doing the cooking, but there, you know, there's more, the travel training, you just have to keep practicing that until you get more comfortable. You can imagine the anxiety of getting on a bus, you know, let alone getting on a bus alone, we all go as a group, eventually, they gotta go alone. So it's steps, it's steps.
Leslie, yeah?
That actually was boring. My question, this is fabulous, I would argue that a lot of most kids produce this kind of training.
Yes. My daughter still wants to do public transportation.
Yeah, I mean, my daughter's in Colorado now without a car, and she's like, "Well, I didn't know how to take the bus." So I think it's great, right? Be all around the city, but, but, that being said, what, what is the, what is the transition plan? Do they, do they stay until they're 22? Do they transition out? Is it different for each participant?
Well, they're able, I think we really wanted to look at individually focused, like, when they're ready. Like, some students may come already equipped with, "I've bought my first job already, I've had some experience with work, I have, I have these independent living skills all set." So you really have to, I think, gauge it for students. Many of these students, because of the extent of their disability, need, need a longer trajectory to learn the skills that we're teaching. So, and Marie can...
Sure, it could go up to age 22, but again, it is very individualized. One of the key components, I think, of this program is that, you know, we recognize that we need to delicately manage that passing of the torch to adult services. And that's exactly what Laura is doing. Her experience prior to coming to us was actually to work for Mass Rehab Commission.
Like Department of Health, or Department of Developmental Services. So I understand all those adult services and what they need to get there. So, so we are like, for instance, today, we are at Mass Rehab, having, you know, a vocational skilled workshop. So they're getting used to like going to the site versus, you know, for the, our younger kids that are nine through 12, that period's coming to school, or they're having, "No, we're going, uh-uh, we're going to you." Everything's out.
Out chasing.
Out, yeah.
There is a great program locally, as you know, where, you know, this is Skills for Living, organizations for kids, younger kids with disabilities, to learn somewhat similar things, not jobs. things, not jobs, but how do you go to the grocery store and, you know, whatever. So it's really great to see this program.
Just gonna do, show it off.
One of the major differences between Skills for Living and what we're doing here is Skills for Living is a private placement.
Exactly, right.
It's not collaborative.
Right.
So it can be one of the pricier options for students. And again, it's quite a distance from here.
It is.
So this is wonderful, our students can go to places in the community and learn these job skills and maybe make those relationships that they can continue on after they leave our care.
Yeah, Wingate, for instance, has already hired several students from Project Rose, which is the post program in Plymouth, where they, they have jobs. We actually have one of our Silver Lake graduates from the Golds program, or Gisellas program that is hired over at Wingate. So there's opportunities for them to go directly from their internship to, now, we're not saying this, we can guarantee that, I really can't make any promises, I don't hold the reins, but that's, yeah, that's our program. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I have a quick question. So I just noticed all of the great partnerships that you have around with Harvard Public Library and all that, I do think it's really important for folks to get out of town. But are there, some of those services or some of those places we can develop partnerships within our three towns? You know, like, that would be great.
Yeah, I have actually communicated with the Kingston Public Library, right, right now they do not have any opportunities for us. And I also communicated with Paul in Kingston to try to develop some things with them. They haven't found it yet with us. And Clemson, I know a public library where my parents, one of my students is there, so that's something that we could look at. So I definitely started in our, in the woods, but you know, things happen from, kind of organically, as they do, so, so, but I completely agree, you know.
That's great.
Laura, thank you so much for your presentation and your work, I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Laura, we do a staff member and teacher of month recognition at our school room, and Laura was hands down December's teacher of month.
Congratulations.
Enthusiasm is contagious.
It is. Thanks Laura, that was excellent.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't met Marie Graeble yet, she is our Administrator of Special Education, and her presentation is up next. Marie, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. What do I have, sorry? Slide two.
Just a quick.
F five.
Top left.
Top left, from beginning, or at F five.
Marie, do you want me to give the presentation?
I think you should. I think you should. There are a couple of you in the room that this will be your second go-around, isn't that correct? All right, well, thank you very much for having me. Let's see what we can do with the clicker. Okay, so, for some of you, this will be a review, but I always like to include these first couple of slides just to do an overview of what special education is. And when we talk about what special education is, it's specially designed instruction to help students with various disabilities from age three through age 22. And what we talk about in terms of specially designed instruction is anything that the child needs to help remediate for that disability so that they can access learning. One of the slides that I've been showing a lot lately, I found this online, and I absolutely love it. I think sometimes people struggle with what is fair and what is equal in a classroom setting when we talk about classroom accommodations. And I think that this slide really demonstrates for folks that if everyone were to receive the exact same intervention, and if it's not tailored to them, we're missing the mark. We're still not allowing each one to have the access that they need. So we really do need to specialize and individualize the accommodations that we give for our students. When we talk about students who are eligible for IEPs, the state of Massachusetts has given us these categories, that our IEP teams are charged with the responsibility of determining whether or not a child presents with one or more of the following disabilities. So these are classifications from the state. If you were to look at 603 CMR, you would find the definition of each of the three. But this is where the conversation starts for our IEP teams. From there, the conversation continues, this is blurry, but it's the actual flowchart that our IEP teams use to make that eligibility determination. So the very first question is, as I said, does the child have one or more of the following disabilities? And the team needs to pull and look at all of the evidence that they have to see if it does fall under one of those categories. But from there, there are still several other questions to ask before we come to a determination of eligibility for an IEP. The next question is, is the child making effective progress in school? If they are not making effective progress, is that a direct result of the disability? And do they require specially designed instruction so that they can access? Any questions on the eligibility process? So the next portion of my presentation is just to give you an overview of some of the numbers associated with our special education services throughout the region. So this is our current year's statistics, and what I've done is I've broken down the number of students with IEPs based on the disability categories that I just showed you on the previous slide. So you can have a sense of what are more high incident categories versus what are some lower incident categories. As you can see for Kingston, for example, the high rate number there of 54 for developmental delay, that is a classification that the state of Massachusetts has allowed us to utilize for children ages three through age nine. It only goes to age nine. And the reason why the state has done that is because they recognize that as children are growing and developing, their skill development may vary in different areas. And sometimes it's challenging to assess a child who is three, four, or five years old and say, "Oh yes, this is clearly a specific learning disability in reading." Whereas it might be a developmental delay that perhaps with the appropriate interventions, they'll be able to move up to grade level, or they will continue to require some assistance, but at that point, we've been able to diagnostically fine tune the category or the classification for the child. So it's, developmental delay is really the capture for the majority of our preschool age students and our kindergarten age students. The next higher numbers you can see is autism or a specific learning disability, the lower incident ones are sensory or neurological. Any questions on that? So I have been with you folks since 2015, and I've been providing you this information ongoing since my arrival here, and I hope to continue to do that for you so you can kind of have an overview of what things have looked like over, over the years. So looking at 2018, I can show, share with you that the total number of students within our Silver Lake region that are currently receiving special education services via IEPs is 629. So over the last four years, it's relatively consistent, you're not seeing a lot of ebb and flow there, but I just wanted, again, to, to give you that data as we move forward. So the next three slides that you have in your packet as well breaks down the types of placements that our students have in each of the communities. So obviously, as this is Silver Lake, we have representation from a little bit of everybody. So you may have particular questions about particular slides, and I'm happy to address those. But let me just walk you through how to read and dissect the information on the slides, and then if you have any questions about any of them in particular, I can certainly go back and talk about them. So, for example, Halifax 2018, Halifax Elementary School currently has 91 students within the brick and mortar of Halifax Elementary School that are receiving services via IEPs. Our Silver Lake Integrated Preschool currently has 14 students from the town of Halifax that are taking part in our preschool program. In terms of our in-district substantially separate programs, which I will, in a few slides down the road, talk about in more detail, but we currently have seven students from the town of Halifax that are participating in those substantially separate programs that are primarily based between Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate. And the town of Halifax currently has 16 students that are in out-of-district placements. And what I really hope that you notice about that particular number, when you look at 2016, 17, and 18, you can see that the number is going down. And that's clearly a direction that we want to see. I broke down further on the bottom part of the slide, the different types of placements that students can, can go to for out-of-districts. Some of them are private schools, some of them are public schools. Say, for example, if a neighboring school like Plymouth or Pembroke or Marshfield has a program that we don't currently have, we could tuition into their school, or they could be participating in one of our area collaboratives. We're currently members of Pilgrim Area Collaborative, but also in our area, we have Reed's Collaborative, North River Collaborative, and South Shore Educational Collaborative. And depending on the needs of the student, that sets the tone as to where we look for the most appropriate placement for the student. Any questions on the breakdown of information?
Marie.
Yes?
How often does a student come off of an IEP?
It does happen. It does happen, I don't have the numbers for you, but it happens more often in the middle school and high school age, where students are really learning to manage for themselves at that point. They've learned the skills, they know what they need to do to remediate for themselves, advocate for themselves, and they're less dependent on the adults around them supporting them with regard to their disabilities. Yes?
Is somewhere in your presentation, I know this is about your IEP plans, but somewhere in your presentation, do you talk about how many, what the distribution of kids are on 504 plan?
This presentation is not on 504, actually, I'm technically not the 504 coordinator, but I'm sure if that's something that you're interested in, we can certainly put something together for you and share that information with you down the road.
I'd love to see that.
We can certainly do that. So as you can see now that I've explained how the breakdown of the information is, you'll see a similar slide for Plimpton. I did not do the detail of the type of placement, where Plimpton is so small, I am very protective of having anything be overly identified. And Kingston. And again, to point out to you the out-of-district placement numbers, 2016 was 41, we're currently at 34 for the town of Kingston. I believe when I started, we had over 70 students that were out of district, I want to say mid-seventies, and we now have 54. So, any questions about the individual towns? Okay, next couple of slides are about money. Tuition and transportation, I don't have updated figures for you for, for the current budget, as I was just meeting with Joy today to go over some of those numbers. It's still in a very rough draft form, not ready for presentation yet, but I can certainly come back and chat about that at a later time. But just so you can see trending, again, I've been with you since 2015, so I just wanted to, to share out with you some of the historical data that we have with regard to out-of-district tuition costs and transportation costs. And as much as I'm very proud to say that the numbers of out-of-district students are going down, we still see an increase in tuition prices, and we still see an increase in transportation prices. And that's something unfortunately that we do need to address in the budget. To try to help offset our special education costs, one of the big ways we do this is through a circuit breaker. And I've done a little explanation of what circuit breaker is, and just to review it again for you. The state of Massachusetts has decided that we can support an out-of-district cost of, for FY18, it was $44,106. And as you can see, every year the foundation amount goes up, but basically the state is saying, "The first $44,000 is on you. Any dollar you spend after that, we will give you a certain percentage of that back." But we don't know what that percentage is until far down the line. So we give estimates of anywhere between maybe 50, 55% to 65% as a rough estimate, but we don't know what that exact number is until much down the line. But from my budget presentations, I usually do an anticipated reimbursement at around 60%. I feel that that's a safe number to, to share with you folks. So again, the foundation amount this past year was $44,106, I expect it to go up for next year as well. I look at all of our out-of-district costs per community, I look at all, all the total claim, and then determine minus foundation, what that reimbursement would look like beyond that. And I know I do my little hand gestures, but I wanted to give you an actual visual that might explain it better than my hand scan. So this is an actual example of a student, of a residential student. And I picked residential because I know people are very concerned about the cost associated with residential, so I just wanted to put that up there just to give you a real clear picture of what that really means to the communities from a financial standpoint. So this particular student, I had a total claim of $220,000, that was the cost of the residential placement. Minus that foundation amount, the net claim is $176,000. With a potential anticipated circuit breaker return of 114, the actual impact to the town for this particular student instead of 220 is 105. That's how circuit breaker works. I think that's probably a better explanation than my little hand explanation, but does, any questions on circuit breaker? What we can do is, say for example, it was an unanticipated placement that was very costly, or we had someone move in, what we can do is apply for what's called extraordinary relief. So we can basically go back to the state and say, "We didn't budget for this, we didn't expect this, this is a hardship to the communities, can you help us out?" So there's a window that we are permitted to apply for extraordinary relief, it's usually around February, and then they let us know if there's some level of reimbursement that they can give us for that year to help offset the unanticipated costs. But again, it has to be above that foundation.
Marie, and I know you're not ready to talk about next year's budget, but I want the committee to understand that the circuit breaker money we get from the state doesn't come until the following fiscal year. It does not come when the students are actually placed into that setting and we incur the cost. So the state always owes us for the year we've already been through.
Correct. So when we build the budgets, we take into consideration the circuit breaker money that we are looking to receive from the previous year to help offset the costs for the current year.
If we had a student move in from another community who was an outplacement student, how would that work in terms of our responsibility versus the responsibility of the town that they came from?
Really great question, and I hope not to make the answer too complicated. There's something that's called the move-in law. So it depends on when the child moves into our community. And the state feels that it's reasonable for us to anticipate students through April 1st. And then after that, the move-in law date goes back to that April 1st date. So let me give you a couple of examples or scenarios, because it varies depending on the type of placement, if it's public, collaborative, or private. If you have a student from a neighboring community that is attending a private school, and it's now December, and they now move into Kingston, let's, for the sake of the conversation, say they moved from Plymouth, okay? So now they're in Kingston, it's December, Plymouth already budgeted for this child. So Plymouth pays for this child through June 30th. Come July 1, it's now Kingston, okay? If it happens after April 1st, on or after April 1st, Plymouth would actually pay that tuition for the entire next school year, and then Kingston would take over, okay? Now let's say, for example, that same student wasn't at a private, but was at a collaborative. There's no entitlement for the child to stay in that collaborative placement, because Plymouth may have made the decision to put the child in the collaborative because they didn't have a program, we may have a program. So we have the opportunity to meet on that child to say, "But we can service the child in our district." Or to say, "Nope, it's more appropriate for the child to stay where they are." So the move-in law doesn't apply. So the move-in law doesn't apply to the public schools and the collaboratives. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yes?
What if they move in from out of state?
The move-in law does not apply. If somebody moves in, we've had this happen. If somebody moves in from out of state, the move-in law does not apply, and it becomes our responsibility fiscally. So it depends on where they're located geographically, but no, that does not apply.
And two of the questions that the team has to determine when placing a student is free appropriate public education fee, right? And the least restrictive environment for that student to make active growth. So, again, and I'm not trying to embarrass you, Marie. This is why it was so important for Marie to come on board with us and build the programs here in the district. So we have that capacity right within our walls, whether it's at Kingston Intermediate or Elementary. And we can send our kids there from Halifax and Plimpton as part of an in-district program. We just have that capacity. And it's really a little bit of a stress relief for us as a district to have those programs.
Any other questions? So, another avenue to help offset our special education costs to the communities, we have two grants that are entitlement grants from the state. They're all coded by numbers, so forgive me, it's just Grant 240. It says nothing fun or creative with its title. But Grant 240 is an entitlement grant, and the state notifies us as to what the allocations are for each of the communities. So as you can see, for FY19, the total grant is just over $1 million, but the breakdown per community is outlined for you there. But again, I wanted to give you a little bit of history of what the funding has looked like over the years. And the way that we have been utilizing the 240 grant is to apply that funding to the salaries of our paraprofessionals that are working directly with our students with IEPs. And that is one way that we can help offset the local budgets. So we're paying for a portion of some staffing that is, again, supporting the students with disabilities. The other grant we have, much smaller, but still important, is 262, which is for our preschool age students, so for our children ages 3 through 5. Again, you can see the allocations that the state has provided for us. And the use of this grant is very similar to the 240 grant, that we're using that to help offset some of the salaries that are supporting our students with disabilities. So now the fun part, I get to talk about the programs. So I think everybody by now is relatively familiar with the different types of programs we have, so I'm going to just review the types of programs and the location of the programs. We have our Developmental Learning Center, which the high school version is referred to as GOLs, and the 18 to 22 version is referred to as Pathways. But we're really looking to have some common language here. So you even heard Laura tonight talk about the Developmental Learning Center programs. We're so fortunate to have this program, I'm going to go ahead. We're so fortunate to have this program at every single level for the region. We have a classroom at our preschool. We have now two classrooms at Kingston Elementary, because our student enrollment for that particular program, because of the needs coming in from preschool. We now have 17 students at KES that are taking advantage of the Developmental Learning Center classroom. So we've expanded now to two classrooms. We have one classroom at Kingston Elementary. We have a classroom here in the middle school. We have the classroom at the high school, and the brand-new Pathways program. Now let's see if I can go back. We have our Structured Learning Center program that I'm looking to sort of rename the Therapeutic Learning Center. It serves students that are struggling with more, some emotional challenges, and social-emotional challenges. And we currently have a complement of this program at Kingston Intermediate School and the middle school. And I'm looking at the numbers, so I can gauge when is the appropriate time to share with you that we are ready to embark on this program at the high school. And finally, we have our Language-Based Learning Center. That was one of the newer programs that, with your support, we were able to bring in. 2016 was its first year, and we opened that at Kingston Intermediate School. We're very excited that we now have it here at the middle school as well, and it's meeting with great success. And again, I'm watching the student populations to see when the timing is right to extend that program up to the high school. So this just shows you the locations of all the programs.
Marie?
Yes?
Just for informational sake, how difficult would it be to find enough placements to take all our language-based learning students that we currently host in the district and try and find placements elsewhere?
It would be very challenging. I think the Language-Based Learning Center is, quite honestly, it's a hot commodity. And I've already been approached by some other districts to see if we're ready to tuition students into our programs. And I take all of those referrals that I receive very, very seriously, because I want to make sure that if we are going to accept a student for a tuition, if we were to accept the student, that it is appropriate fit for the program. And that the way that we are going about executing our own program is not at all compromised. So it is, it's all about appropriateness of fit. But I will say that that particular profile, I think, is one of the more challenging to find appropriate placements for. And I'm part of a special ed director listserv, and we're always chatting with each other, and we say, do you have a language-based program? Do you have this? Do you have that? I need this. And the language-based program always gets the most chatter. So I think we will soon be in a position to be receiving students from other communities. Yes?
So right now, we don't have that at the high school, the language?
We do not have that program at the high school just yet.
So that those students that needed that would have to be tuitioned out right now?
Yes. That has been the case. And again, what I look to do is ensure that we have an appropriate cohort group before I approach the superintendent and say, we're ready to embark on this program. I don't want to have a student so isolated that it's one student and one teacher. That's not a program for me. So I look at the numbers, I look at the grade levels, and I look at fit.
Okay.
Yes?
Do mental health students fall in here? Can you wear a deviated in the Structured Learning Center?
They can, yes. So the structured learning or therapeutic learning, again, with social-emotional impairments. Emotional impairment, you saw on the earlier screen, is one of the disability categories. It tends to be one of the more primary disabilities for students that are in the Structured Learning Center. Any other questions for me? I'm so thrilled to be able to present this information to you every year. And as always, if there is any need or direction that you would like to see us pursue, I'm certainly more than happy to look into that and to be the feedback.
Any questions for Marie?
I do one other question. Transition path for those students who are on an IEP in their high school year, not necessarily needing a Pathway program per se. But from what I understand, transitioning out of high school and into a college setting, the 504 plans are actually more useful in a college setting, and are applicable there? So what's the transition plan? Do you have a program that sort of does that?
So for all of our students, whether they're on an IEP, a 504, or they're not receiving any support services, we do work, the high school does a very nice job working with all of the students to help them transition to whatever their post-secondary goal may be, whether it's college or career. For students with disabilities, to your point, 504 is Americans with Disabilities Act, and that is for life. Anyone in this room would have a 504 if they so choose. Whereas an IEP does time out when you either turn 22 or receive your diploma. That doesn't mean the disability goes away. It just means that you're no longer eligible for school-based services. So we work with our teams, we work with our families and our students to help support that transition to adult services. So say, for example, we have a student on an IEP that ages out or accepts their diploma. The IEP team works with agencies like Mass Rehab to help, pass the torch if you will, to help Mass Rehab pick up on the support services that that student needs. But also, that 504 can be something that they have to follow with them to college. Colleges don't necessarily look at an IEP, but they do look at verification of a disability. So we try to educate our students with IEPs. Once they turn 18, they are considered adults, and they need to be advocating for themselves at that point. So we work with those students to say, there is a disability center at the college that you're looking at. Please advocate for yourself, go to the disability center, share with them what your disability is, and then you can access the support services at the college level. So it's really after age 18. It's up to the child, or the adult, to say whether or not they are going to disclose their disability, whether they were serviced on a 504 or an IEP. They need to be able to go to that disability center at the college and acknowledge that they have a disability and they need certain accommodations.
Any other questions for Marie? Thank you very much, Marie, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, back onto the agenda at hand. And I am looking for a motion to accept the minutes from our October 25, 2018 regular session minutes, please. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would also entertain a motion to accept our executive session minutes meetings from October 25, 2018. And I do not see any reason why we would need to hold those minutes.
Motion to accept.
Motion made, do I have a second? You would like me to hold? Okay. So on the direction of our, the advice of our superintendent, she would suggest that we hold them. So Paula, would you like to amend your motion?
Sure. Motion to approve and hold.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion to approve and hold our executive session minutes from the 25th of October? Second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please, I have to change, hold.
Thank you. And going to Jim, we're in your house. Is this the last thing we went through a little while, or did we come back next?
I think we're done here for a little bit anyway.
Since Jim's house, we'll let him go first with principal.
Can I?
Do you need a moment?
I was just gonna move it, Lisa can't see, but you're talking. So I asked him to keep it moving. Is it all right if I let Michael go first and then I?
Absolutely. Let's go.
Thanks, Jim. It's just hard for Lisa to hear.
All right, so I'm gonna kick off with our course change request for this year. These are our new members on the board to make a change to our program studies. We present those changes here first. We have two different departments who are making a request change. The first is our math and computer science department. Kevin Sawyer, who is our formator for grades 7 through 12. He would like to remove the practical computing course that is in our program studies. It's been, we haven't run it in over 10 years, if not longer at this point. It's previously populated by students in our goal program. However, they are very successful in our computer app class and with our software programs growing. You don't need this course anymore.
Is it, do we?
That one is not in the packet.
Math, but they are, they are the.
The other four are in, you have the packet for.
Would you like any further descriptions of why not in the packet, or are you comfortable? Okay, just making sure.
All right. The second request for Mr. Sawyer is to remove CP2 trigonometry. Bear with me while I explain the math behind this. Right triangle trigonometry is actually now being taught in geometry. Trig, course trigonometry was originally built to cover things not covered by the M-PAS who seems to take in their junior year. The next test, the next gen test will not cover it though, therefore needs to be taught in sophomore year. So there's really not enough material to run a whole trigonometry class with all of that now in geometry. This year's geometry CP2 class has already shifted to increased right triangle to the curriculum to prepare them for this year's M-PAS. To kind of piggyback with moving trigonometry, there would be a change in the prerequisite for Algebra II CP2, which would now be junior year math course at the CP2 level as a result of moving trig into geometry and dissolving trig altogether. Whether or not that fits, to those who don't see it in front of you or sort of follow our program of studies. Mrs. Sawyer has been working with the department at length about these changes. And it's really to ensure that our students, taking math freshman and sophomore year, have all of the material that they need to prepare for the M-PAS test, but then still having classes obviously that are substantial and meaningful for our juniors and then our seniors.
Can you fully describe the vocabulary and theory?
Yeah, I can do, actually. My mother would be proud.
What is CP2?
College Prep II. So we have different levels. We have College Prep II, College Prep I, Honors.
Okay, thank you.
You are. All right. Moving on to final practical arts change requests. The first is for Ceramics II. It's a change in prerequisite to make it a C- or better in Ceramics I. So the goal is, Ceramics I is really open to all students. It's a semester-long course. Ceramics II, the reason for the prereq would be, it's really designed for students who want to learn more advanced techniques. And so we're hoping that it's the students who are really interested in, not just, you know, trying to fill their schedule with a class. Ceramics II is also a semester course. It's something where we've always looked at in a way in the past, but this is just making it more official.
Is there currently a prerequisite?
No.
Okay, so that just brings one.
Yeah, yeah. We have a new course proposal for the art department, a murals course. This would be a semester-long course, and it would alternate every other year with our painting course that we offer. It would be for 10th grade and 12th graders who have taken either Art I or Fundamental Art. So there is a prerequisite for it. And the teacher, Ms. Close, is really working at trying to add a different type of art to our repertoire that we're giving our students. You know, we have ceramics, we've got digital, photography. It's just another form of art for our more advanced art students who are looking to pursue.
But the way it's being proposed, it would be no staff increase?
Correct. Yep, because we would alternate it with the painting course.
So if you took studio art, could you, would that qualify as a prereq?
I think so. Studio art I, yeah. Yep, yes. And what they would like to do is use the walls of our school or areas in the community to do the murals on. And then it would really focus to be one mural a semester. Because it's a lot more than just painting, which is also time consuming. But it's group-based, you know, project learning, you know, developing, working, you know, with the clients to develop their vision and, you know, sizing, and then obviously the art behind it. So it's, you know, large-scale collaborative project. So I don't, superintendent's office would like to see that. Oh, yeah. You know, we've got a couple of ideas just even in our school, you know, and then obviously we'd like to consider opening up to our communities as well if there are projects around in public buildings or whatnot. So that's on the table. And then the other change request is with our course classes. And again, try to bear with me here, it's kind of complex, and I apologize that you don't have this in front of you. When you do that, right? All right. So we want to change a few things around here. At the end of the day, the same students are all still being served, but just in a different capacity, so we can better serve them all. And so instead of a freshman treble choir, concert choir, and select choir, we would have a concert choir, select treble choir, and select choir. And that would really sort of help, you know, at the middle school level, there's honors choir and non-honors choir. So that would help with that transition, and just better serve our students so that those who are, you know, the higher level performing, this music. who are, you know, the higher level performing, this music is their thing and that's their ambition, they're in appropriate setting, and then the students who, you know, are just interested, you know, just general concert choir, I want to explore singing or I want to take this as a class, they still have that opportunity and they're balanced out in the right places. So there would be a placement audition for both select treble choir and select choir, but concert choir would be open to all. Any questions?
I give it.
Okay. So those are all the requests that we have for this year.
Unless there's further discussion, was there any other question?
I just was wondering if on my previous question about prerequisites for murals, on number two, could you add in studio art or consider it because it's not in here?
I would certainly ask Ms. Pasqua and Ms. Close. They would be experts. I'd boogie, find that one. Yeah, I can ask. I don't want to speak on their behalf because they're the, that's their department, that's their expertise, but I will certainly ask.
Jason, I got a question. Back up to the murals. I have no problem with art, but I know a lot of people think some art is bad. Do you already have something in place if you put up a mural that we start getting complaints?
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be approved by the principal.
Okay, all right. You got something? All right, all right.
I promise we won't be too much.
I'm just saying, you know, if there was nudity in the picture, you know.
It's all worth it, it's a steam towel.
This place for it, but.
Not in Russell.
So with the understanding you might go back and talk to your arts staff, I would entertain a blanket motion to accept the proposals as made with that contingency.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Okay. And the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple of donation requests, please, that we've made. The first is from Mayflower Municipal Health Group. They would like to donate a twenty-five dollar gift card to our library for hosting the NMHD workshops throughout the school year. I spoke with Ms. Redding and she would like to use it to purchase new cables for the smart board that is housed in the library. We also have some vehicles that we would like to accept as a donation as teaching supplies for our automotive program. A two thousand and one Ford Taurus from Scott, Carrington, Kingston. A two thousand and five Kia Optima from Alice Turner in Halifax. And a two thousand and four Toyota Camry from Mr. Bob Hodge in Halifax. And of course, we would send thank you letters to all of our donors.
Would you like to make the motion to accept the donations?
I make the motion to accept the vehicles and tech donations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Kell?
I do, I have two more topics, sorry.
No problem.
Just a quick, some school updates. I feel like we keep dragging this out, but we do finally have our total tally for our breast cancer awareness fundraiser. Last year, again, we raised nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, so I challenge our liquor family to raise ten thousand this year. We found out two days ago, once all of our donations came in, we had a matching donor who tripled some of our donations for us. And so our total raised was eleven thousand six hundred dollars. Which is impressive for one month's work. And all of that will go to the Dana Barber Cancer Institute at South Shore Hospital. So it goes right to our communities. Our students just wrapped up their production of Year in Town. I know I saw some faces there over the weekend last weekend to see it. It was hysterical. I don't think I belly laughed that hard in a very long time. The title, I think, scared a few folks away, but it was actually quite genius. I'd like to congratulate our cheer team. They went to state for the first time in our school's history and then qualified for nationals for the first time in school history. So we're really proud of those young ladies.
Wow.
Kind of sticking with the sports theme, we had our annual Thanksgiving football game versus Pembroke. We hosted this year and I'm proud to say the trophy is back at the lake. Our seniors hosted their senior dinner events a few weekends ago and their Emmy night was when they announced and wore all their superlatives. That was just a nice formal event. It's just our seniors and I don't like to bring guests from other schools. It's a pretty nice, formal evening. They do dinner and dancing. Sort of one of their like last hurrahs is a class, you know, before they go off their separate ways at the end of the year. Winter sports have started and then the last update I have is to share with you that we have several teachers now who have received the Stop the Bleed training, thanks to Kingston Fire Department. They will now be the trainers for the rest of our school and our plan is to have everybody trained by the end of March. And thanks to Christine Healy, we received a grant so we can purchase a Stop the Bleed kit for every room in the school.
Wow.
So always looking at students' safety.
That's great news. Thank you, Christine, for that work. And again, still, we appreciate you putting the time into investigating that and please send our thanks to the insurance company as well. If we haven't sent a letter to them stating our thanks, please do so. It's an important initiative.
And then lastly, I have an out-of-state field trip request. The NaFME All Eastern Music Competition is in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania this year from April fourth to seventh. We have two students who were selected. This is a huge honor. We have senior Quinn Boneman, who played Bobby Strong in Year in Town, if you saw that, and junior Stephanie Northrup. And Ms. Pasqua obviously would be their chaperone, with your permission, would like to send in there.
May I make the motion to support the out-of-state field trip for our two students from high school?
I'll make the motion to accept the field trip.
So is there any questions or discussions? But, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
I'll call out Ms. Reveal. Did you need to get the out-of-state field trip for the cheerleaders?
No, because they're not going to go.
Oh, they're not?
No. So one of the cheer team, they, because they went to states and placed at states, they haven't bid to go to nationals. But it's a huge sort of process that they weren't really prepared for. And so they as a squad voted and they're not going to go this year. And so their hope is to perform well again next year and then play in more advanced so they can travel next year. But thank you.
And congratulations on their success.
Yes, we're really proud of them. Very proud of them. And only one senior, so. Same squad next year.
Jim, your host, thank you for deferring.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I just want to thank Nurse Beck, who's our promiscuous advisor, one of the wonderful job that she does with our kids each year. And thank our students for coming in and doing that performance. I mean, Carol, who obviously she does many roles in our school, she's our nurse, she does a lot of things, but her heart and passion comes in for the kids every single day. And you see it in the performances on the stage and you see it in her eyes when she's in here. So I want to thank her and our students for that. I'd also like to recognize Pam Sanford for her hard work over the last year and a half to really bring something that I think is going to be special for the middle school in the national junior on study. So they deserve a lot of credit for that, so I want to thank them for that. I'm going to start to connect it to what Mikael was talking about, which is Stop the Bleed. So we've also done Stop the Bleed training here at the middle school, so we have our staff training and we have the kits and they're going to be in every classroom as well, just to connect it so that, you know, we work in unison and it's very important that we're trying to make sure that our buildings are safe and our students are safe. And that's always one of our priorities. So I just wanted to update you on that. So I'm going to move into Kennedy Space update. So our Kennedy Space Field Trip is coming up. We have twenty-four students that signed up to go down to the Kennedy Space Center from the Science Club that was run by our advisor, Kathy Benat. They're from all three teams in the eighth grade. It was open to anyone who wanted to join the Science Club. Through the Science Club, they're working on a NASA project and they're coming down with that project when they go down to Kennedy Space Center. So it's really something that we bring some of the stories and information back to you guys after the trip. So I want to talk about that. So everything's booked for that. We have an early space tour for our students when we go down there, which is where they go and they see the first launches and they get to actually walk on the actual launch pads. So we're going from the tenth to the fourteenth and they shifted one day, it's going to be the ninth to the thirteenth. So I just wanted to make sure we were updated on that. And that really came down because of cost. So the trip itself hasn't changed, but I did pass out that so that the dates were on my favorite. So I just want to give everybody an update. That's the Kennedy Space Center. Holiday head start party, that's a piece of what you guys saw when you went in. I want to say that, so every year we've invited over fifty children and their families from the Head Start program to our annual holiday head start party. Over a hundred and fifty were in attendance today, from our students to faculty and our families. It's really such an awesome event. Our kids come in and they're so passionate about being with the little kids, bringing the toys to them. And then the end of it, what you guys got to saw when you went in, is the families, the little ones getting a chance to sit with Santa, hug Santa. And it's just such a great experience. And I'm just thankful that it's something that we reach out every year to Head Start and do this. And this is something that we've done for the eight years that I've been here. So again, I want to thank our PTO. I want to thank our cafeteria workers that donate their time. I want to thank our faculty. I want to thank our over forty students that came in to do that. And it was really a great event. So I want to thank them for that. Along that holiday cheer, we have our winter concerts coming up on December eleventh and twelfth. We have our Toys for Tots program where over fifty students have participated, brought in toys, have donated to the local Toys for Tots campaign, which is the Marine Toys for Tots program. And that is to give back to our community. We also have our Coats for Kids that's going on right now and that's through Anton's Cleaners. They're looking to donate over two hundred coats again this year for families that are in need. And that will be running through the winter concerts. We'll have boxes out there and people, when they come in, they donate their coats and we donate that to the families in need. And I want to thank Anton Cleaners for including us in that. It's a really special thing. We also have our food drive where we put together, I want to say something around like fifty boxes of food for the food drive that we do every year. So I want to thank students and peer leaders for putting that together. We also have our holiday giving tree, which Nurse Beck coordinates. And what we do is we donate fifty gift cards to some of our local community families during this time of the season. And I want to thank our teachers for their generosity and supporting that every year. So thank you for that. Student Council is in the process of working on their stockings for soldiers. Last year they had somewhere up of a hundred stockings for soldiers and this year their goal is to do the same. And it's to honor our veterans and active-duty military soldiers with a stocking for each soldier. So I want to thank Student Council for working on that. We have our Spirit Week coming up. That's from the seventeenth to twenty-first. We will do things like Ugly Sweater Day, Holiday Fun Day, and other such things, and on Friday with SL Pride Day. That's Student Council also run. Recently we had a Mark Aggression or Anti-Bullying Assembly. Went very well. The assembly deals with issues of bullying, cyberbullying, relational aggression, internet safety, and students gain an awareness of how social cruelty can negatively impact themselves in the school environment. So I want to thank Mark for coming out and doing that presentation for us. Basketball tryouts, so basketball tryouts start off next week. So I just wanted to say that they begin on Tuesday, December eleventh. And moving on to class size report. Before I do that, I just want to make notice that this is our school newspaper. I made sure that I handed one out to everybody. So if you get a chance to take a look, this is our students reporting on their school from their vision and their perspective. So if you want a grounds eye view of what they think about what's going on, they can read with us. We also have that posted on our website for anyone or parents that want to take a look and pop on, so they can do that as well. So if I can move over to class size report. So everybody has the class size report here and this kind of goes over the class sizes here. One of the things that we talked about last time is the diminishing numbers coming into the middle school. So if you look at the first page, the first page goes over the incoming from kindergarten to current. So currently we have two hundred and sixty-four students in the eighth grade, two hundred and fifty in the seventh grade. And then sixth grade coming into the middle school, we have two hundred and sixty-two. Grade five, currently two fifty-six. Grade four, two forty-two. And then it bounces back to two seventy-eight. Grade three, two sixty-two. Grade two.
I think there's thirteen, if I remember, it's off the top of my head. The subcommittee reviewed all of them and we'll be moving them forward. So in January, we'll do the first reading and then February it'll be the second reading for all four districts.
Revolting funds?
No need.
Okay. Paula, safer?
Safer. I'm going to give some highlights.
Two seventy-two, grade one, and two sixty-two in kindergarten. What we use those projection numbers are is to project what our class sizes do look like as we're coming forward. So if you look on the second page, or you flip it over to the front now, and this here gives us our current class sizes and our projected class sizes for next year. So if you look at our current class sizes in the seventh grade, so you have your seventh grade ELA, our current, so if you were in our classrooms today, it would be an average of sixteen. So what that means is that we take all our seventh grade ELA classes, which we have five on each team, so we have fifteen total. And you take the class size from each of those fifteen, add them up, divide by fifteen, and that's your class average size. It doesn't actually project out exactly like that because of student desires, singleton classes sometimes pull on the master schedule a little bit, and you might have one class of, you know, fourteen and one class of eighteen, you know, and that's the way it is. But that's, that gives you a class average size, gives you an idea of what we are placing into our classrooms. So the seventh grade ELA class, the class average size is sixteen. Math is sixteen, social studies is sixteen, science is sixteen. And then you get into the rounds classes, which is our tech engineering class is twenty, math lab is twenty, health is twenty, literacy in the digital age is eighteen, art is twenty-one and, art is twenty-three, excuse me, PE is twenty-one. And our mixed classes, which are music classes, those are the class sizes for our mixed classes with chorus is sixteen, beginners band is six, band is seventeen, and world music is six. And if you move on to the eighth grade, and again, taking the same formula, you're looking at ELA, our class average size is seventeen, math is seventeen, social studies seventeen, science is seventeen, tech engineering seventeen, math lab seventeen, PE is twenty-two, art two is seventeen, Spanish is twenty-five, French is twenty-five, and then Latin is sixteen. And if you project to the next year, our current class size for the school overall is going to remain relatively stagnant. But what you'll see is you'll see a switch between sixth and seventh grade because right now the larger class is in the, in the eighth grade and the smaller class is in the seventh grade. So next year, the eighth grade's class will be a little bit smaller and the seventh grade's class will be a little bit larger. So they relatively just swap numbers for next year. But those are the projected numbers for the eighth grade. The reason why you'll see that there's not much, and you're going to look at this and it's like, oh, it doesn't really look like a high school matrix where there's kind of variations between the classes, but it's because we have small learning communities here. So because we have six small learning communities, we have the same number of ELA, math, social studies, and science teachers. So therefore, those class sizes are going to remain stagnant because they're each supporting the same number of kids. You have five teachers supporting eighty-something students. And then you switch to the other team and you still have five teachers supporting eighty-something students. So therefore, there's not going to be that large fluctuation that you might see like between the high schools' ELA and social studies, for instance. You just won't see that because of the small learning communities.
And the small learning communities, just to reiterate what Jim was trying to go over with you, is the distinction really between a middle school model and a junior high model. So the same teachers have the same students for the five major subjects. So they can get together and say, hey, I'm noticing something about X student in my English class, are you noticing it in your math class? And they share those similar students and they can have those conversations and support the students as a team.
And it's one of the assets of our building. I mean, that team building, that students identify that that's their team, these are my teachers, that they really feel like they belong to that, that's identifiable in small learning communities. And one of the things that Joy and I had worked on a few years back is making sure that those teachers that Jason's talking about have an opportunity three times a week to talk about those students, build curriculum, build team activities. And that's within their duty time. So I know, like, at a high school level, for instance, duty time could be watching a study hall or doing lunch duty. Our duty time here is meeting and talking about students, what their needs are, what they need to do, reaching out to parents, communicating about their team. And that's part of what makes this middle school special.
Can I ask you a quick question about the enrollment numbers? So I'm just curious, Jim, with the enrollment numbers going down, pretty, a lot, and for a long period of time, what we're projecting, does that, does that mean you'll just make each team smaller, or will you eventually go to two teams?
So what we've done is, each team has, has become smaller. So if you look at our numbers right here, it's going to be, for the next, you know, four or five years, it's going to remain relatively what we've seen here. And so the enrollment numbers that are coming in are going to, like, next year's enrollment's what you see, and then you see it going down. Instead of diminishing a team, what happens is that the class size becomes smaller. So with these class sizes that you're looking at, for instance, sixteen and seventeen, on average, when I first got here, they were somewhere around twenty. So they would, they would fluctuate between, like, nineteen, twenty when I first came here. But because of the reduction that you're talking about, Leslie, that they've gone down, and this is what you're seeing. So we haven't diminished a team. What you've seen is diminished class size. I mean, there's pluses and minuses on diminished class size, which we've talked about in the past, but obviously, you can differentiate a lot easier. Student needs, and one-on-one, and things like that from the teacher becomes a lot easier. Like, for instance, when you look at, like, the foreign language, where twenty-five sometimes in some classes is twenty-eight, you know, their ability is not as great as the class that has sixteen. I'm not saying that we don't all have to look at things and make some decisions, because I'm not saying that. I'm just saying what, you know, what these numbers mean, what we do have to look at.
Sure. Just so we can be on the same page with numbers, can you level set for me? Because I actually see the enrollment going up. There's two outliers. Fiscal year twenty-two, the twenty-first, twenty-second school year, we would be down to four hundred ninety-eight. Two years later, we would have the highest number in fiscal year twenty-four, school year twenty-three, twenty-four, we'd have five hundred forty-five. If we take those two outliers out, it looks like we're going from the five teens to the five twenties to the five thirties.
It's true. If you go down a few years, for the next three years or so, we'll be stagnant as to what we currently have. And then after that, it is going to pop back up. So you are going to add, when you hit the five seventy-six and five fifty-sixty-seven, I mean, two sixty-seven, you're going to pop back up around forty students more than we currently have. So you're talking about forty students. So the difference between, and you can look at this to get a gauge, and I could obviously project these numbers out based on this, if that's what you guys wanted to look at. But the difference between what we currently have is roughly a dozen students, right? We have fourteen students more in the eighth grade than in the seventh grade. And what that does is it adds one per class average into the class. So you're looking at about the same, because you have about fifteen classes per core ELA. So eighth grade, we have fifteen ELA classes. So for every fifteen students, the class average goes up one. So if you project out, so let's say that, like Jason said, so you project out that we have forty-five more students coming in than we currently have. So then that seventeen is going to look like, you know, class average is going to be like nineteen, twenty at that point. And then, the reverse is true, obviously, as well. For every fifteen students that we lose, that class average goes down. So if we lost thirty more students, then that seventeen becomes class average size of fifteen.
I noticed exactly what you said, Jason, as well, in the scribbles. You know, we're, it is that the two sixty-four in eighth grade is really almost an average of what we have in the next several years. We're not dipping on a two-year middle school basis. You know, like you say, there's fifteen, fourteen between seventh and eighth now, there's twelve on the flip next year, and then there's sixteen the year after that. So you are bumping up one student, bumping down, I think, until that two seventy-eight, which is, you know, it's not like, I might want to have student more per class.
Right.
And I did that about to the high school, too. The numbers range from one sixteen to one eighty-four, and it goes down, it goes up. So it's not a big range, I don't think, in a four-year structure to jump around fifty students. I'm not sure structurally what we could encourage or do or anything. It's really kind of at margins.
I think it's definitely good data for us to have, especially the other side of the sheet that shows us how some of these are distributed. And I'm sure Jim has probably had some difficult permutations in his mind, you know, moving forward. Paula's done an excellent job leading us past, through our past two budget discussions over the past two fiscal years. And we've had some very formative conversations with the finance committees, both in Kingston and in Halifax. And I've received some guidance from, from Plimpton as well. And, you know, we really need to be able to look at all the options, and this data is just going to give us, you know, real numbers to make some decisions based on.
Just one question, Jim. Why do we see the difference in the math lab, the tech engineering, and then health?
So the math lab, you mean between the grade levels, or you mean that they're the same?
I guess with the, like, the, the grade levels, you see, this current year is at sixteen for the other classes and at twenty, at average twenty for the tech, the engineering and math lab. But when you look at next year, everything's around seventeen. So I was just trying to understand what, what the difference is.
Yeah, so, but, that's a good question, Gordon. So what you're looking at, if you look, and what Gordon's asking is, why is the rounds classes at one number of twenty, these ones are at sixteen? And then this one goes, these numbers go up the next year, but then the rounds go down. And he's trying to, you know, put that, because I'm saying, this, so let me answer that. So when you're looking at these numbers, Gordon, what we do is, we have collapsed one of the sections, so you don't have five of these sections running. So let's take your tech engineering. You don't have five sections of the tech engineering running. I've collapsed one of the sections, so you have four. But what they do other than, because they, obviously, everybody was going to teach a full load, is they teach one of the Project Lead the Way electives, so they teach automation and robotics. So what we've done is, we've enriched our program studies with that. So I've collapsed the section and enriched the program studies by adding another elective that our children get an opportunity to take. So that's why that's up. And then the reverse happens. So when, when this class size comes up a little bit, Gordon, what I've done is I've put that section back here, and I've taken the lower class size, which then becomes up here, and I've collapsed the section here. So I'm able to fluctuate because those elective teachers are not on teams. So I can create a fluctuation outside of the teams without impacting the small learning community. So that's what I do, because it's a better way to enrich the program and bring it to the kids. So that's why you're seeing that fluctuation.
Okay. Good question, good answer. Any other questions for Jim? Jim, any closing remarks on the Class Size Report, or is that good?
No, that's it. I just know that we talked about it last time, and I want to make sure that we brought that forward, so we had that.
Again, thanks for putting that work into it. It gives us real information to work off of as we approach the budget. Thank you. All right. Christine, the Business Director.
In the faculty, we're fine with financials. We're still doing, still doing pretty well so far this year. I do want to mention that we are constantly looking at the activity at the school, so we know who we're going to keep with, there are things that need to adjust, that need to change. We look at how loss share happens, trust, and everything, so we know the true issue of any contracts that have been cut off, the cost of staff, what it will cost for all the services that we need. We try to account for everything that we can imagine. There are things that we just can't imagine, that come up all the time. And so when I was in the financial, tonight, I decided to go through each and every deficit, but I just want to kind of categorize them. We have one category where we have several, we have a handful of deficits that are totaled somewhere in the thousand-dollar range, and those are kind of one-time events. That's just, even my estimate was on, just something's happened, but that, I do not expect that to continue. It was a one-time event, we're done for the year. So that's just more information connected here for the budget. After that, we get to some areas where things still look wonderful, like this. One of the areas that I had mentioned to Steve, and I would mention this, act on our accounts, but still working on that process of finalizing that. I know that right now, we're in the midst of the nuts and bolts of it.
We've actually been working with our phone vendor and a contractor to identify why Verizon costs have not gone down. And we found that apparently Verizon decides that when you report on your numbers and have no numbers left, you really don't want to cancel your service. You want to add different numbers in to keep your service going. So when we tell them we're disconnecting, we just continue with it. Oh, well, you've got these numbers out. So we're working through the process of canceling the numbers.
Considering we're having a few lines as we were closing.
Do we have the right count to pay that bill?
No, because they said that you never officially filed a cancellation notice, so we just assumed you wanted to be active.
Wow.
Yeah, I used to think Comcast was bad.
Is this because we didn't go with Verizon for our phones?
Pardon me?
Is this because we didn't go with Verizon for our phones?
I'm sure it is. However, we've also found that our fax lines, they somehow decided that any call made outside Houston is not a long-distance call. So we're working on getting that fixed at some time.
Oh, I hope to God Verizon, and anybody who works Verizon might hear this, but-
As I've told Joy very recently-
Steve, Steve, I'm going to go off for a second. Give me a moment, Steve. Verizon, what you're doing is, is immorally criminal, and you're doing business with three communities and all the families that depend on this school. And I hope that our families will stop doing business with Verizon if Verizon doesn't stop this baloney that they're pulling with us. They're holding us hostage, and it's a sham, and they should be ashamed of themselves.
How would the Mass Attorney General feel about that?
I don't think it's something that would rise, or I don't think it qualifies as a criminal-type thing. I have been in contact with a consultant that's actually-
It's disingenuous business practices.
Absolutely. I don't know.
I think it's scientific, not, not personally. How long has this been going on? We can have a phone problem for a year. I think it's time for the-
We are on the tipping point of getting it resolved. I think I said that last year, too. Now I truly believe that we actually are there. The people that we're working with are great, and they're, they're scanning every line of every bill we have and working to get it, figure out what we can just continue and just tell them, absolutely cancel it, just because we took the number away, it didn't mean we wanted to keep it going with a new number.
Well, Mr. Chairman, maybe they might do the right thing and kick back all that money of the donation to our schools.
I think that the idea of maybe talking to council about it is not a bad idea. Maybe wondering if, out loud, if we talk to the Attorney General is not a bad idea. And the scariest proposition of all is talking to local media, four, five, seven, twenty-five, would probably love to have a story about what Verizon is doing with their billing practices to a local school district. It's a shame, it's terrible. Verizon should be absolutely ashamed of themselves.
It's morally corrupt.
Agreed. So I love fun pursuing that. I love tackling bad people.
I want, I really want to protect it, too.
Yeah, absolutely. I will.
And not personally, it sounds like we deserve more than that.
I will pursue it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Steve, that's, you know, a friend to you, but please let your consultant know that we're pretty upset, and it's not at them, it's at Verizon. And we might take some steps beyond what we're currently doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You've got it. All right. Christine?
I'm going to continue.
Go ahead.
Just another category of items I wanted to mention in financials. We're always trying to clarify the conclusions on a financial, so it has more meaning to the user of the financial. So you will see a small handful of categories where there are small tendencies because of that. The clarification just comes, we'd like clarification on the media, the financial, and also there's clarification from DESA as they make changes. So we try to work with them. Just a couple of areas that I am concerned about. One of our high school homeless transportation has, has gone to a deficit situation right now. And that's not going to stop. That will continually change, where this is activity through October. So there's still a ways to go. And then our agents' accounts right now is okay, but we need that to start changing. Because what we do is we uncover, as I mentioned earlier, we uncover all the activity that we're aware of. And we haven't covered for the new hot water tanks and installation, but we're getting to the point where anything new that comes over will start dating to deficit situation. So we're mindful of that, and we're trying to verify the integrity we can. So I just wanted to let you know about that. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Christine?
On the homeless transportation, is the state reimbursing us from the previous year? Is it that same system?
We do get reimbursed from the, from the previous state we are, and that goes into, that just goes back to our general fund. So in the end, it does offset, because it all feeds through our E and D account. So we do receive-
Is it a full reimbursement, or is it half-parcial?
Oh, I, there was one year where it hit approximately fifty percent, but it's not at that level anymore. I think, oh, I'm thinking it's in the twenty percent that it's reimbursed.
Okay.
Doesn't come down to they pay us what they want, when they want to do that?
They pay what they have to, well, based on what happens on any record, or I submit all the information on what we have paid for homeless transportation. And then they collect all that information and see what they have to discuss, and that's how we calculate the percentage.
Okay. Any other questions for Christine? Thank you very much, Christine. Appreciate it. All right. We are on to our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I wanted to introduce Steve Hello. You know, every year, as we're building the budget, I like to try to bring in our people that help us to build the budget. We just heard somewhere, Gravel and Special Vacation is certainly an important part of our budget, as is Steve Hello in terms of technology. So he's put together the same type of spreadsheet that he has done over the last few years, of course, which is very helpful. I do just want to mention before he speaks, one of the things that we're sort of discovering is that we have online assessments, Star Read 180, that we are using with our students, and it's particularly in the elementary level, more so than the secondary level. We're right now trying to clarify whether are they curriculum, or are they under the technology, the software management curriculum? So we're working on trying to be consistent, so these numbers may change slightly. I just want you to know that, because it is helpful for us to be consistent across all the grades, but also for Christine, as she's going in to do her report. So we're correctly inputting the data the way we're using it. So we're kind of working our way through right now, making sure that we're all being consistent and that everything is accounted for. We're a large district, and we're building many budgets simultaneously, so I really want to make sure we're all clear and we all know what we're doing, and everything is where it should be located. So I just wanted to mention that caveat before Steve got, oh.
Okay. Please, as Ray mentioned, we are working on shifting things around to have a more consistent building of the building, grade to grade. Starting with the middle school on the, on the sheet that you all have. Again, it's the four categories that kind of break down and give an example of different things in each category. And school management, curriculum, software subscriptions, these are things that are required by running of the school and delivering curriculums. Technology management, these are things that are required to keep our backbone, our infrastructure in, and the devices and software needed, so that students can get the critical. Supplies and repairs, really obvious, pretty much all the supplies we need in the hospital that we anticipate already setting any devices up for repair that we can't handle in-house. And I do want to say that, for the most part, Steve Smart, one of our technicians, is doing a fantastic job keeping up with the chrome up repairs that we need to do, both here and at the high school, which is saving us quite a lot of money not having to set up. And then technology, hardware, assistive technology, assistive technology, software, hardware, devices, or specific software factors we might need for students are required for, you know, for. Two things that are on here, the raptor visitor management is something we're proposing that we would like to bring into the building. That is similar to the lobby guard system they use at the high school, where when a visitor comes into the building, we go to the office there. If they're here to volunteer, if they're here to do whatever, their licenses scanned, the vendors that come in, workmen, they scan the license, it does an instant check against the national, sorry, the sex offender registered database. And then for its own badge, has a person's ID on it, and it also includes the time of they enter and the location they're supposed to be visiting. So if you see someone in the building you don't recognize with a badge on that says it's supposed to be in the cafeteria, and they're wandering to the library, they are, let me show you where you're supposed to go. That is, I believe, approximately twenty-two hundred for the first year, and then there's a subscription cost to- cost to about 500 a year going forward to maintain it.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
Just for clarification, the assistive technology, is that non-sped related or does that include special ed?
That would be more special education.
That is, okay, just curious.
Wireless access points, these are devices we're adding to increase coverage in the building for areas that are weak and also as some of our access points become outdated, there to replace those. On this as well, you see the internet service support contracts and wireless access points with asterisks. All those mean is that we will get reimbursement from the E-Rate program for those items. Currently, our reimbursement for the internet service at Silver Lake is approximately 50% and the support contracts and access points fall between 40 and 60, depending on whether they choose to classify Kingston as urban or rural and what our free reduced lunch count is at that particular year.
Steve, I know there was concern about three years ago that E-Rate was gonna diminish significantly and it hasn't seemed to have done so.
Well, this is the last year of the funding cycle where they have money for the hardware. There is no talk that they're going to discontinue the reimbursement for internet yet, but there also has been no announcement as to what they're going to do about the hardware going forward after this funding year. So we're trying to take advantage. We actually did very well with the E-Rate program to replace the entire network infrastructure here under E-Rate a few years ago. They, it was approximately $220,000 project and I think they funded it at just over $100,000, they shipped it in just over $100,000.
So you have taken into consideration if we need any of that hardware, switches, highs, access points for this fiscal year?
We are put in for that. Our funding for Silver Lake is almost gone because they didn't, they funded, I believe it's currently $152 per student over the course of the five years, for which you can apply for a project that equals up to the total of the amount you have left, but then you only get reimbursed for a portion of that. Not complicated at all.
But you've analyzed it and you've utilized the E-Rate reimbursement at Silver Lake to the best of your ability to maximize...
We have utilized it to the best of our ability within the financial constraints of the district. I don't wanna go off on my things just because we have E-Rate money and I also don't wanna say, hey, we should be spending another $30,000 on access points when we don't really need them this year. That's not true, I do wanna say that. I just don't think that would go over well. Flipping over to the high school. Again, very similar, same categories, very similar examples, I won't read it all out loud. Under the technology, hardware and assistive technology for the high school, some things that we have, are asking for this year, about the Chromebooks with the warranty, projector setup for our art room. Currently, there is no installed projector in the art room and to use a projector, the teacher has to pull down a screen which comes in front of the doorway and students have felt the metal bar hit their head occasionally walking into the room. We would like to prevent ongoing issues with that. And also when she wants to use the projector, she kind of has to wheel the cart out into the middle of the walkway projecting on screen out the door, which is not ideal if you have to go back over to the area or... We are looking at that project. It's kind of unique wound in that it's not square. There are cabinets around three of the walls and windows on the fourth. So we've come up with a solution that will basically with the projector up above, the screen up above cabinets drop down the front a little and project from the ceiling. That is one thing we were looking for. We are looking for a new color printer for the time practical arts department. In doing what they're looking for, we decided to be going with a laser color that's far more cost-effective than the jet in the long run. Short run, the inkjet would be cheap, we could put it in, but the cost of the supplies over the years will just be a bit less. And then again, wireless access points at the high school.
I got a question, Steve, I might be backing up.
Sure.
How are the, how are they, the Chromebooks, how are they holding up? Lots of damage, lots of...
There have been, there's a lot of, yeah, that's about the best way to put it.
Lot more than we expected or...
Yes.
Yes.
We do have the insurance on this year's batch, which has been wonderful because instead of having it come in, having us have to do the initial diagnosis, contact the repair company, wait for them to get back to us when to ship it and tell us that the cost to ship it is on us and then, but you should send a heads-up time because when we ship, before this year's setup, when we had Chromebooks in any way, we pay the ship and shipping is uncovered. The turnaround could be three weeks to four weeks if we got really lucky and got them at a good time, it could be two months. With the Dell warranty, we usually have them back within three to six days.
And the kids who lost them, they get a replacement during that time, right?
The...
We have lawyers.
We have lawyers, yes, yeah. We certainly maintain the agents or the notes of that request.
Yes.
We'll actually be doing a device check because we have the NPAS online this year. So with our sophomore students, they'll be hearing from me a lot to make sure that they're prepped and ready to go to the test.
No, I was just wondering, would it be worth working at other devices again down the line or is it worth staying with the Chromebooks and stuff?
I would say that down the line, it would be worth exploring what it would take to go to a bring your own device program. There are a lot of technological and managerial challenges with something like that, but it would also mean that the school was not buying a new set of Chromebooks every year.
Speaking to the idea of bring your own device, last year during the budget discussion, you said that one of the initiatives you were gonna be working on was a virtualization of our desktops.
Oh, yes.
Has that process gone? Because that would maybe mitigate some of the issues of people coming in with multiple platforms.
To answer your question, the virtualization project is up and running.
Awesome.
We have been in touch with the teachers in the programs targeted first and we are working with us to pilot it with a few students and hoping to roll it out to 16 next semester.
So again, many of you don't know or maybe you do, Chromebooks aren't true computers, they're access points to the internet, they can't run some of the more robust programs out there and through Steve's program to make a virtual access point. The mainframe's offsite, but you can access programs and...
Basically what this will do, because the Chromebooks cannot run Adobe Photoshop, they cannot run our CAD program. By virtualizing it, students with Chromebooks can run it not only in school, but also at home. So it's gonna allow those students to, if they wanna do homework, if they wanna explore beyond the class. If they're out sick for a day and they wanna work on the project, they'll be able to do it from home on their Chromebook. They can do it from home on their phone. I mean, I wouldn't wanna do it myself with my eyesight, but you could. One of the key challenges of bring your own, two main challenges of bring your own device is when you have students with devices that aren't functioning, we can certainly give them a loaner Chromebook, but we're not going to get into repairing or troubleshooting beyond basic connection to the Wi-Fi, why a student's phone isn't displaying it correctly. And a teacher delivering instruction on a Chromebook, all students see the exact same thing. If you have one student with an iPad, one student whose device is their phone and one student whose device is a laptop computer from 10 years ago, they're not going to get the same visual experience. And they'll be asking a teacher, why can't I see the, this button? So those are some of the challenges. They're not insurmountable by any means, there are many school districts doing it, but...
We'd also run into a financial issue because there are families that can't afford to...
So...
More than you think.
There's nothing that says we cannot provide Chromebooks to those students, but for the moment, this summer we had a very busy summer. We K to 12 reimage every computer in the district, reimage all the iPads in the district and the monthly management system. We tied all four buildings to them, so Silver Lake is now the network at K to 12. When you log into Halifax or Kingston, you're logging onto the Silver Lake network. For teachers that teach in multiple buildings, this has been huge because previously, elementary teachers, they'd log onto the computer with one password, they'd get their email with a different one and they'd do Power School or something different. And if they couldn't get on one, it would be, I need to change my password. Okay, which password? The one that gets me on. Now it's all the same, it's all one, it's universal across the district.
Yeah, that's good.
Teachers who could teach in Halifax can go to Kingston and log in. We've also tied together the wireless system, so when we have PD days, teachers who are bringing their devices, if it works in Halifax, it's gonna work in Kingston. It was a very busy summer, the five of us, and I think we got our steps in that summer, I'll just put it that way. But overall, things are going very well and we have a great team. And we're very happy with the way things are.
I think the Chromebook program is, as much as I detest Google at times, is wildly, it is wildly successful and I applaud you all for implementing that. And I would really encourage you to keep that group rate for insurance for parents, that $29 rate, which is key because to your point, Ed, things happen and to have only paid $29 to get it replaced or fixed is really...
Student could easily be just walking down the stairs and slip.
That being said, the virtual desktop system that you're looking at, I think is great because like those, like you said, it's just a point of access. You really, you're really doing a project that can't, our kids fight over the one computer we have in the house for them. So that would be great, but I applaud you all, I think it's great.
So I think considering this is a technology proposal for two buildings for 2019, 2020, this is an extremely modest request, but do any of you have any questions or concerns about Steve's proposals at this point? Steve, do you have any closing statements? There seems to be no questions.
Although the last several years has not been quiet this late in 2000, we're only about $7,000 more than what we actually spent in 2015 and '16.
Yeah, I wasn't being facetious when I said it.
No, I understand that.
I am complimenting what you and your small team have accomplished in the time that you've been our director of technology at Silver Lake and...
Seven years in different...
When I first, when we started basically at the same time and just the smoothness of the infrastructure change within our buildings, the ability for our students to have 21st century schools that function as 21st century schools in terms of the job place and just the society in general. We note technology is an integral part of our social lives and our business lives and I think Steve has really done an incredible job getting our students prepared for that. Thank you and I applaud your efforts.
Thank you for the compliment, but I will say it wouldn't happen without support from us.
I just want you to know, I wasn't commenting on your services, I was commenting on the durability of the actual machine.
Oh, that, that, okay.
Yeah, I just want to...
Trust me, I'm not taking it that way.
Okay, okay.
Steve, if you looked at the bring your own device, would you be able to expand the virtual machines to the students as well?
With the licensing fee, yes. We pay per seat.
Just from an educational standpoint, before we get too far down a path, and I know you're not even really formally exploring it right now with the bring your own device idea, managing students and making sure they're actually accessing their device for the lesson at hand and not checking out Instagram is hard enough as is. And when they start having their own devices and you have to manage those multiple platforms, we'd be better off going back to no technology, in my opinion. And I know that's not my choice right now, we're not even discussing it, but...
We are, I just wanted to let you know, we are always looking at options that are out there.
Agreed.
It doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be the way we suggest or the way we do, but if we don't look, we don't.
Absolutely.
And to your point, I'm gonna just say one more thing and then I'll stop because it's getting late. We do actually have a program in place in all buildings in the district called Land School, which works extremely well with the Chromebooks. Teachers are able to, from their desktop, look and see what every student is doing on their Chromebook in their class at the time. They're also able to interrupt and freeze the screen.
That alone tells me, no, we're not going to.
Shh, don't say that to the public. The kid will find out.
They know, they know, Chris, they're messing with us.
Teacher's face all of a sudden in their screen.
I did hear a story, I forget which school committee meeting I was at where someone said that their student was actually on Chromebook watching a video in class and a message popped up on the screen that said, if you spend as much time doing your work as you do watching videos, you'd be getting a medical report.
Yes, I heard about that as well.
I forget which school committee it was at.
And again, that's the benefits of having a single platform. I know Apple has Apple Classroom that has the same functionality and the idea of bring your own device has its merits, but also it has its dangers and that would be one complication right there. As an educator, I can tell you, it would not be worth it.
No. I can't get my computer to boot up, I can't...
Any other questions?
I lost my homework.
For Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your time, Steve, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. So as part of our budget discussion, again, so far we had, we had Marie, we've had Steve on the elementary level, we also had Melissa Farrell who does Title I and she does our curriculum. I'm currently meeting, I met with Jim this week, last week?
It was...
Recently?
Yep, last week, yes.
Yep, recently. And I'm meeting with Michaela tomorrow and then I will be meeting again with Jim, excuse me, with Steve and Melissa to sort of clarify some of those curriculum slash technology issues. I'll be meeting with Kara, our facilities director. So it's a pretty big process to make sure we have all of our pieces in and that everything is accounted for and then we have Christine go through and input the stat numbers, the contracts, which is one of our, it's our highest percentage, it's probably somewhere around 80% of the budget is our stat. And she also will do our utilities and the different areas that she will cover, transportation. Once we have all that together, we will then review everything again and we'll have follow-up meetings with Michaela and Jim and see how those numbers look. So we're well into the process at this point in time and I just want you to know that we really do work very hard at making sure we're coming in with a, with meeting what you are looking for us to provide for our students. We recently had a meeting, we had a meeting early on at the end of September, I think it was, with Kingston Finance Committee. We just recently had one with Halifax and I didn't know both Paul and Boyd were there. If you wanted to share the towns, or the ones too?
So basically the town Halifax said to continue with the budget cycle that's been happening, basically, level...
Service.
Level service and contractual obligations, but if there's an issue, please let them know.
So it was, it was a good meeting. I think some good information was shared and so it was a good beginning. I think it's, the town's in a little better shape than it has been in some years, so...
So they did just find out they have a $200,000 cost to repair one of the bridges in town, just for plants.
Of course. All right, so much of that idea. It looked really good last bridge.
Which bridge?
Pine Street.
So I just wanted to let you know that's where we are right now. In terms of some of the information, we do have a couple of requirements, so that's, that is helpful information for to provide a little bit of cost savings. And again, we're just sort of collecting all the data and all the information now. Is there anything through any of the presentations or any ideas you have or any information you wish to make sure we consider as we're moving forward?
I would say that is a vote of confidence in your methodology and your track record since you've been the superintendent. You know, I've been privy... You know, I've been privy to discussions with finance committees in all three of our towns, and I know they appreciate the transparency with what you put together, your budget proposals, and I know your leadership team really takes it seriously and doesn't bring anything to the table they don't think is absolutely necessary, and we can take it from there.
Excellent. I also did want to mention, I met with the new Plimpton, well, not so new, Plimpton Town Manager. Town Administrator. Manager of the community.
It becomes semantics at that point.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's, whatever the.
We have Elizabeth, and she's doing a great job.
She is. She's wonderful. So we had a great, I had a great opportunity to meet with her because it's reasonably new for her, and trying to figure out how we actually do do our funding and how things are figured out was, was information she wasn't really as, as up on. So I think she, she appreciated sort of the, a little bit of training and assessment and how that works. So we are well on our way. We will be bringing our first draft of the budget in January to give you a chance to look at it at our next meeting. Again, House One will not come out until the Fourth Wednesday in January. Off the top of my head, I apologize, I don't know what that date is.
House One might be delayed because we have the new incoming legislative branch, so traditionally, every other year when we have a new class, it sometimes is delayed.
Mr. Creed, a former school committee member, some of you may remember, informed me that it should be on time, so I don't, he tends to be right.
Should, should be based on the governor's number for House One, so seeing the governor's saying it shouldn't be on time.
That, that was exactly the sentence John said. Did you talk to him, too?
No.
Okay, I just couldn't remember what he said, but that is.
You just haven't called him back yet. Okay.
So that's, that's where we are. So again, we'll be bringing that in January. If anybody comes up with any ideas, concerns, feel free to reach out to any of us, but we are moving forward full speed ahead as much as possible. There is one thing that I wanted to let you know, and I would appreciate sort of a vote of confidence or a vote of support on this. In January, the minimum wage is being increased to $12 an hour. I believe you're all aware of that. We currently pay our substitutes $75 a day, which will be below minimum wage as of January, and we are barely at minimum wage at this point. Morally, I think it is wrong to pay them so poorly. They are very important people to our buildings and especially to our children. We are not obligated to meet minimum wage laws. I've had this conversation with Fred, but morally, I believe we should increase our sub-rate pay. So I would like to recommend increasing it to $85 a day. Substitutes are in the building for a minimum of six and a half hours. More often than not, they're here for seven hours, so it's very difficult to come in exactly when the kids come in and leave exactly when the kids come in. So I figure seven hours is, is fair. At $12 an hour, that would be, you know, obviously, be $84. We would at least be above minimum wage for it. I would like to honestly be in a position to increase it more than that, but we, it is really much, very much a budget increase. I believe if we make it $85 as of January 1, we'll be able to get through this year. Substitutes is always the line, we never know. I mean, we, you know, it depends on how many teachers have to go up pregnant, you know, what medical leaves there are, whatever, maybe going on in someone's life, but I believe we'll be okay if we make it as of January 1. I've already presented this in Halifax and Kingston, and they voted to support it. I believe I can do it without necessarily an official vote, but I just would appreciate the support. I'm sorry, Ed.
I also know that you have trouble finding substitutes.
We have a terrible time finding substitutes, and that is true of every school system. We are not the lowest paid. We are on the low end, just so you know. But I believe if we increase to 85, and I believe many surrounding districts are also, I believe it would certainly be helpful to us. And it may be something down the line we look at again. You know, it is projected that the minimum wage will continue to increase. Again, it does have a pretty big budget impact, just so you know, when Christine is building the budget, you will notice the substitute line will go up.
When was the last time it was increased?
Was it 2004 or '06?
2004.
2004.
So we've been like this for 14 years?
Maybe.
About $85 isn't going to be enough.
Yeah, well, it's, it will help, but it will help, but then I can't in the middle of the year jump more than that.
I know.
I have to keep the budget balanced. I don't disagree with you.
I'm just being realistic with somebody who could be doing substitute work.
Right, yeah, no, I, yeah, we have people who, you know, surrounding districts, 75 is not the lowest number. You know what?
We're pretty commensurate with the 75.
Yeah, that's why, I think, you know, it wasn't unheard of. Again, my concern is morally, I just can't, I can't pay somebody below minimum wage that's in charge of my children. Well, not my children, but, yeah, they are my children.
They are your children.
I, I agree with your reasoning for going to 85 as of January 1. I can support that. I, I would suggest that we would revisit the number soon after that point, when it's appropriate in the process, but not indefinitely, because I think we're asking them to do a lot. I think we asked them to drop everything they're doing for that day, if they were having anything planned and come in on sometimes, sometimes they'd notice, but most of the time, not so much. And we're asking them to not only just watch our children, but teach our children.
Absolutely.
You know, and they're walking into situations that are very unsure every day. They don't have their report necessarily, or obviously, some of them come a lot, so they have a report, but I think that $85 is kind of a travesty.
I don't disagree.
And then on top of that, I also think if we're having trouble finding substitute teachers, I think we need to be more competitive with our rates so we can attract them to come to our school district versus maybe a neighboring one. Supply and demand, so I would just ask if we could put that on the docket at some point sooner rather than later.
So what I'm going to say is, we have budget discussions coming up for FY '20, and the implication would be that you think that we should move it in FY '20, and Joy's saying she can't do it any higher than the current fiscal year because we already have a set budget. Again, though, we're going to have to weigh the pros and cons of raising that rate versus our other needs as well in the district. So, Leslie, if you'd like to make.
I'd like a quick question before I make the motion. How many substitute teacher days ballpark do we do in the district on a year?
It's a lot. It's a lot. I, I mean, I know in the elementary, when I was in Kingston, they set about five on average each building, so 10 a day. So, you know, by increasing, I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive, and I imagine you're more.
What's the amount that's in the budget?
I mean, 10 is probably an average.
Yeah. Two, two hours until the middle school and nine in the middle school.
The staff is big enough that you've got to do the figuring. You're going to have a sick call.
So. Well, we're talking more five to 10 per building, it's room making.
Oh, no, 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 just once you get to a certain point, you get, there's numbers.
So just to follow on that, just for, just to play the scenario, when we come and debate it back in a couple of months, so Jan or Michaela, when you don't have a substitute to fill in, you draw from who you have, right? So that cost of the person who you draw from who you have is taking opportunity costs from somewhere else in the school that day, if you're short?
So it's, I think it's, we do it a little bit differently. So at high school, if we're not able to fill a vacancy with substitute, we use our teacher duty periods, and so we're pulling them off of duty. So that class, that teacher who's out, we have a different colleague cover each one of the classes, and the result is that those teachers are, you know, for either not in the class or lunch duty, or they're not in the hall for hall duty.
Let's ask this question. Have either of you ended up in math class?
No, I'm sorry.
Have you ended up in a math class?
Uh, no, but history.
History, there we go.
No, we are creative, too, you know, we can combine.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you end up in classes, sometimes it's due to emergency. You know, the, the teacher has an emergency with their child or something like that, and you need to be in that classroom until we can rotate someone in there, and sometimes it's because you don't have a person and you're trying to find that person because you find out last minute.
It's how we spend the first half hour of our day every day.
But we do it, we do the same thing that Michaela described, so we have, our teacher duties are a little bit different, they're not on hall duty, which we kind of talked about a little bit. There are teacher duties, they're actually meeting and talking about students in smaller learning communities, but I pull them from that, unfortunately, and I put them in the classroom because student safety is the priority, and you need the teachers in the classroom. And that's an unfortunate reality that Caitlin and I are talking about, that for good reason, Joy's here talking about the substitute pay.
Paul?
Two questions, and this is my own education. Do substitute teachers go through any kind of training, or are they just, you know, individuals in the community with two-year degrees, four-year degrees? I'm not really sure. We had this conversation back in the elementary school days when I was on the committee. Just really quick, I don't mean to derail the conversation, can you give me that?
Sure. So what happens is, when I started, there really wasn't any sort of an official screening process or training, so what we do now is we have a rotating schedule between principals and assistant principals who bring in the candidates, people who apply to be substitutes. They interview them, they go over responsibilities at that point in time. We have a substitute handbook that's available, it sort of goes through responsibilities. You know, we do a form check, they have to be fingerprinted, they have to have three references. So, you know, it's, it's not like hiring a teacher, but we, you know, we need to make sure that they're safe.
Right. And then, do we have anywhere on our website, or do we send out anything to our parent population, to our community, these three communities, that, you know, this is an opportunity? People might not think about, you know, geez, I, I could be subbing in a, in a school building a couple of days a week. You know, I would, do we advertise our need at all in the communities?
We pretty regularly do.
Yeah.
We put it up on School Spring, we have it on our website. It's an ongoing, every school system that I know of is looking for substitutes.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's not something most people sign up to walk into a school to do every day. I mean, it's just not an easy, you know, I remember when I was switching careers and I did a lot of subbing, I mean, I, I fell in love with it, although most people think I'm a little strange, so.
I, I think I would love it as well, so I'm, I'm right there with you, yeah.
You know, and it's, it's true primary methodologies right now for, for getting a sub to come in, even after the screening process, you know, some districts do the phone call, and, and some districts have great response from that because it's hard to say no to a living person. A lot of school districts have now moved to a digital platform.
Which is what we do.
And there's pros and cons to that. The subs can quickly learn which classes they would prefer to sub in, which ones they don't want to go anywhere near, and then it gets hard to populate some of those classes they don't want to go anywhere near.
We do have a disclaimer that we have a right to. Because we do.
Right, so, you know, there's pros and cons to all methodologies. I think the bottom, the bottom line is definitely we need to compensate people at a respectable rate to get, to get good people in our classes to work with our kids, even if it's for a day.
So I'll make that motion as you'd like.
Please.
So I'll move for the school committee to support your recommendation of an increase to $85 for substitute teachers as of January 1, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Paul is in favor?
Paul.
All right, it's you now.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And that's all I have.
All right, on to some new business, and there is no new business. Does anybody have any business they'd like to bring before the committee next meeting? If you do, please feel free to contact myself, Boy Joy, within a few weeks of the next meeting. Moving on to old business at this point, is there any update on any of the governance discussions?
We're having lunch next Friday.
Let me know.
I'm not letting you know now.
Oh.
We said Thursday or Friday, so Friday, I have to go to California next week.
All right. In light of how long our agenda has been tonight, for the student involvement part of the school committee meeting tonight, I did hand out to everyone a copy of the Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38m, and I just want you to, to read it and bring yourself up to speed on it, and we will discuss it at the next school committee meeting in more detail. No one's opposed to that idea. We move on to reports of standing committees. All right, so, is there any member from the SLEA here tonight who'd like to speak to the school committee? I'd just like to wish our teachers a restful and joyful winter break, and thank them again for all their efforts with our students, especially in this chaotic, hectic, and awesome time of year. Administrative review.
Okay.
All right, CTE, Chris, do you have any reports?
We met with Elliot, he gave us a little tour, those that haven't been there, talked about his need for a, what's it, plastic cutter, $30,000 on the.
C.
Yeah, thank you. Which is now just basically a table that stores some stuff, so hopefully we can get that in budget next year. In fact, I got educated on what, what they're doing and an update on the nursing program, which is great.
And in case you weren't here at our last meeting or weren't aware, Chris is the Chair of the CTE Subcommittee. Thank you, Chris, for taking that, I appreciate it. All right, the chairman's report, that's me, some correspondence. The Chief of Police from Halifax, who, who has been in that tenure for over a decade, is recently retired, and Joy has extended a letter of thanks and just wants to say a few words about our partnership with him over the years and the support of our students.
So I, I just written an acknowledgement letter to Ted Roderick for his support over the years, and I sent it to the Silver Lake School Committee and Halifax School Committee, as well as the Selectment in town. Ted was somebody that always was present at our monthly Community of Concern meetings that we have every month. Ted was instrumental in helping us to explain to the community the need for security cameras, surveillance cameras at Halifax Elementary School. You know, he is always very responsive to times when I need him, i.e., I'm texting and he responds, which is really important to me. So, and he has always had our best, our students' best interest at heart. So I had just written a letter, and we can pass it around if you'd like, I just wanted to thank Ted and wish him all the best in his retirement because he's been great to work with. I, the new gentleman, the new Chief of Police, John Chavez, is correct pronunciation, has just started and seems like another great guy, so I would look forward to working with him.
I'd like to wish Chief Roderick a happy retirement and thank him for all of his years of service to Halifax and the Silver Lake community. All right, Legislative Agents Report, all I'm going to bring up tonight is, we've actually had fiscal revenues of the state taxes above expectations again. It sounds like the state is bringing in money, and I don't know exactly where it's coming from. When I figure out where all their money's coming from, I'll let you know. There's a lot of people who are saying that the economy is growing soft, and there's signs of downturns, but as of right now, that hasn't shown up in the state revenues.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
The report out of the Massachusetts School Committee.
Have they asked?
Yeah, that's it.
Yes, sir.
I read that today, and it spoke about, one of the reasons for the revenue increase was people prepaying their taxes for this current year.
Right.
And then the, the number of concerns that was raised in that letter seemed very high with a number of people, the Federal Reserve member from Boston was in that, and then the Michael Heffernan, who's the DOR Chairman, discussed the budget as well and seeing soft sides, so I think everybody should be aware of that. The $100,000 that was put away was probably a good move.
Yeah, just so you know, last year, at the same time of year, I gave the financial report as Legislative Agent, and we had higher-than-expected revenues for the final three months of last fiscal year, and the same conclusion was drawn that people were prepaying, and we didn't then see the soft things in the months following, but it does sound like the forecast is a little bit more bleak than it was for last year's. So, pardon, same thing, didn't want to bring up too much negativity, but I'm glad that everybody's already in the fiscal sensibilities. Negotiations, family relations, Safety Subcommittee. Chris, did you guys have a meeting?
Yes, we met with, I'm forgetting the teacher's name.
Aristotle.
Thank you. Regarding temperatures, was the primary concern, not the winter temperatures, but the, so the book ends August and June, and technically, I probably should refer to Jim over there in terms of his solution, but in simplicity, if you want basic details, we're going to try and add a dehumidifier function to the heating system, and what's that going to do is going to draw out the humidity in the middle school and hopefully draw down the temperature and the feel and relative humidity in the building, so hopefully that'll work. We're going to try that this year, I think, in the budget, and see how it goes this spring. Obviously, we can't make test it now, it's something by the way, till, till June, and while we don't want hot weather, we'll need to see if it can affect the test.
And again, I, I think that the, the. And again, I, I think that the, the teachers have come to us for many years, expressing concerns about the temperatures in the classroom, and primarily, their, their tact has always been about the effect it has on the students and their learning, not necessarily their own well-being, but it is a safety concern, and Jim really worked it out with some very intelligent gentlemen, who came up with this idea of putting dehumidifiers into our HVAC system. Did you have anything you'd like to add to that, Jim?
Yeah, so, and I think Chris explained that very accurately, so what we did is, we're looking at the problem and a way to fix it, and one of the things we said, well, if we could take the humidity out of the school, it would really take some of the, the air quality back to something that would be much more appropriate on those really hot bookends that Chris talked about. And so what we used is our existing ventilation system. So we have three huge ventilation systems on top of the roof that already currently exist, and they take all the air in the hallways of this entire school and vent it through the rooftop. So what we did is said, okay, well, what if we can take the air from the entire school, put it through some kind of coolant system, take the humidity out? The objection, the, the object was not to air condition the school, but to make the air quality much better. And with that in mind, we met with Bob Arnold, who already currently services our buildings and has done so for a number of years now, and he could buy a condenser that will attach to our existing systems, and that will pull all the moisture out of the air. And obviously, one of the other outcomes is it will bring down the temperature in the hallways as well, but it will succeed in doing what we wanted to do, and will also succeed in bringing the temperatures down, which is what Chris was talking about from that meeting, and we're piloting this year, we work really hard. Joy and I have talked to the teachers multiple occasions, and this really seems like a fit that everybody's kind of excited about, for our students, for our staff, and for our building. So, going to pilot this year, and one of the things that we asked Bob to do, when Christine and I were talking, is to do a load test. The load test does is it takes the current ventilation system, and it checks to see if it's going to do what we hope it's going to do. And impractical from a theoretical, practical. And, and so he did the load test, and he came back and said, yes, it should do what we are hoping it's going to do. So now, we'll hook it up, and then we'll see the, the outcome. So that's the pilot for this year. Does that, we're going to be very, very excited about it.
And at the very least, with, with Chris having this discussion with the teachers, it shows our good faith in trying to approach the situation in a fiscally conservative manner, but also in a tact, like you know we're doing something, you can say, here's the condenser, can you feel the air? So, good job to all involved.
And teachers' concerns were, you know, the first few days of school, you want to get kids started, and you're sitting, you're sweating, and dying of heat, you just not start. And at the beginning of the year, you try to finish up a lesson, and it's middle of June, and exams are coming, you're not really getting the participation students you should. And their, their concern partially being the impact of the act of denitrative as well. So Jim gave you the long answer, I think the pilot will be this year, and next August to check in with high school and see if it's a compatible solution to their system or not. I don't know if we have an answer or not, but at some point we'll get it.
I spoke to, I didn't.
No.
I did speak to Bob Arnold, the behavior this week, and the point is that he's going to be moving over by the end of next week with the high school, and see that if what we are doing here is compatible with what they're doing with the high school, and if so, when the pilot's done and it is effective, we'll then obviously move forward and, and do that with the high school as well. So, I, I'll just give feedback to you guys from the teachers that have already talked to me about this, they are so appreciative of the efforts here, and they wanted to thank superintendent and the school committee for really putting together, put something that would work and really help the schools in those dog days. You don't think of June as dog days of summer, but we have so many snow days, we're here to like July first.
There's no snow days this year, though, don't worry.
The committees that go between, that did all the, Jim's work in figuring the solution out, so we didn't give him any direction, I don't think, he kind of came to us with a, a very moderate price of vote or something, Jim.
So it's a quick question on the budget aspects of it, so if we cross our fingers, it is successful here, our pilot project, shouldn't we be planning ahead such that the high school, if it is compatible, and there's all the ifs here, could be serviced over the summer, such that in the fall, if it is successful, if there are two? I'm just thinking, like, do you want to wait a whole nother year of this to make it an improvement, if it's, in the high school, if it's successful, this June, in the middle school? Budget-wise, just something to consider.
Again, it's one of those things that we're going to have to put on the table.
Right.
And weigh the pros and cons of that versus all our other needs, but at least we'll have data to work with, especially after next year, and if we have a little wiggle room in the budget next year, which I'm not saying we're going to have, we can always look at it. All right?
And we didn't really look into that in terms of cost for the high school, because we don't know, I don't know if we know the systems or what the compatibility of that elements of it is. We have no clue in cost of the high school, yeah.
The HVAC system might be completely different at the high school, we've already acknowledged that.
It's a bigger school, so.
All right, so, on to the pack, do you have any report?
Yes.
Very collaborative. There's actually been a couple of meetings since the school started, the school year started. They have a new director, her name is Dr. Rebecca Hope, I think.
No, what is it?
Dr. Thomas, Dr. Thomas.
Oh, okay, sorry, Dr. Thomas, I apologize.
We know secretaries do run the place.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, Dr. Thomas is the executive director.
They went over the budget, their budget for the year is approximately eight million. They have a hundred and fifty students at present, that's an approximation, high approximation, but they are pretty sure they're going to have students go up as the testing for the kids go by, and they're expecting more by the end of the, the calendar year. The three towns are getting approximately fifty thousand dollars back from them. It's proportionate to the size of the towns. Basically, it was excesses from last year, so, and they have to return such money back to the school systems.
Which means they have a healthy reserve.
Yes.
Which is nice to hear.
That's about it. That's the main difference.
So a hundred fifty plus students right now?
No, it's, it's lower than a hundred, I just used a hundred fifty to round it up, it's in the hundred forties, I don't know the exact.
Okay, but in that ballpark?
Yeah, it's in that.
Great. Any questions for Ed? Thank you very much, we, we realize that that's another school committee font to itself.
I guess I had to choose, they had their meeting for this month, tonight, so I couldn't split. They, they said they understood why I was coming here, but that was kind of funny. I had to choose.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Policy.
At a meeting?
It was Monday night, and, yes, oh, we were there, that's right.
And we went through all of the policies.
We went through all the policies, I think perhaps by next month's meeting, we might want to have a little bit lengthier discussion, and we'll be budget impacting as well. Couple of highlights are, as we know, the water heaters in the high school, the installation will be later this month. One of them did fail, so we're running on one, so I, I think we're probably, that the timing of that was good. Solar canopies, Joy and Christine met with a company that's, or met with the Plymouth School Department, who has done something pretty positive around solar canopies. We're having a consultant look at our potential, and by the next meeting, we should have some results from that, so that may be a good story, or at least something to, to look at there. The capital plan continues to be updated, we can talk about that next month. Very importantly, the roofs of the two buildings. We were here for the CTE meeting, and we walked around, and there was water pouring into one of the CTE classrooms, there was all kinds of water around some, you know, windows. We have a lot of water infiltration issues in, in both the buildings. Kara has somehow found the ability to review the roofs with a drone to see where the water issues are. We would have that report reviewed and available, and we can discuss it by the next meeting. So, more to come, but we probably have a lot of discussion and evaluation of building needs that we need to talk about as a committee coming up in the short run, and I guess at this point, I'll leave it at that.
And I appreciate the brevity in which you brought that up, because we were at a meeting for over two hours discussing those three issues that you just mentioned in about three minutes. Paula, if, if it's okay with you, chairman's prerogative, I'd like to have our safer report at the top of the docket for our meeting on January tenth, so we can all be fresh and ready to talk about it and really put some brain power into it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
All right, so we could talk a little offline, but, you know, the facilities are in desperate need of attention, and we're lucky to have Paula really focusing in on some major issues, and I really think that we would all benefit to put our heads together and try and come up with some creative solutions, and the ways that we want to talk to the three towns about our steps moving forward, the overall potentials, the steps we can take to mitigate, you know, catastrophic failure of our roofs between now and, you know, three, four, five years from now. We have some really good ideas. Kara has put all of her time and, and, you know, her department into trying to mitigate what she can and finding the experts to fill in those gaps where she, she can't handle it on-site. Thank you very much, Paula. Any questions for Paula?
Just a suggestion, I've been a little bit of a tangential member of that committee, but, you know, if there's another meeting between now and the, and the next school committee meeting, but a lot of that's going to be brought up at the meeting, you know, I would hate to see the committee sort of, the Subcommittee hash everything out, and then have, have to sort of sit through the hashing out again with the committee, so I might just, I don't know the best way to sort of manage that, but, you know, I know that that sometimes happens, where the Subcommittee kind of goes through everything, but then we all go through it again, and I think it's a relatively large Subcommittee, with a lot, a lot of folks, you know, who are here on the Subcommittee, so I don't, I don't know the best way to do that, but.
I'm going to, I'm going to say that Paula, Chris and I were, were at the last meeting, so there was representation from each of the three towns, and we really discussed the need to put this out in the public light. So if we need to have any type of safer conversations, we'll have it during the regular school committee meeting at the beginning of the meeting, so it's, it's on camera, and the general public can be here for some of those conversations.
I think that makes sense.
I don't know if we come up with any new information, Matty Chair, if you'd like to have a privateer meeting, or?
And, and we can figure that out between now and then, I think there'll be some prep, so the discussion is crisp and articulate, we're not all over the place.
Yep.
I'm very interested in the drone results.
Right.
So, I guess what I would say, I, I would anticipate a meeting between now and then, I could be wrong, I guess we could distill whatever information comes up and decide if we want to have another meeting. I'd be sensitive to what you're saying, and I do agree, these, some of these numbers might be fairly substantial, and the committee's going to need to talk about them openly and in a full committee session, but I think we might need to distill down some things to make the, the meeting as fluid and as, you know, meaningful as possible when we meet again as a full committee.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, our lock meeting was a couple hours, and if we can come back with a two-hour meeting between now and then, it's safer, and then forty-five minutes here, hopefully we've saved everyone else an hour, fifteen minutes. And that's kind of one of the Subcommittee, I guess, you know?
Right, true, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I, I had forwarded some notes. Kara, Christine and I met with, we got Yale associates to come into the office, and I actually had the good fortune of climbing on a high school roof with Mike and, and Ed, and it's, we, we definitely need some work to be done, but he's developing a plan. I actually have the reports here, and I can send them to you as, as PDFs, but they're, they're very small to me, as PDFs, but I, I do have one set on the larger paper, so you can get a sense of them, but Yale associates is willing to come in and do a presentation to you, his name's Ed Sharon, so we've sort of gone up the food chain, so we're, we're, things are moving pretty quick now.
Yeah.
So we can have him come in if you want, to school committee or to the Subcommittee.
I'm going to do either of both. Like grant flowers about this subject matter, but I'm going to say this in short, we need to have oversight by us, not hire our, our own site, because the problems that we have shouldn't be happening.
And we acknowledge that at the safer meeting, that having roofs that were 'oh four and 'oh six should not be having the problems that they're having. As you know, this, this has been a point of contention with the school committee, how could these roofs have been put together so poorly in the first place to be having the amount of problems they're having currently? We pursued the company that did it, we pursued warranties, and we're actually at a loss, because the company that put the roof on is out of business, so warranties are either expired or null and void because of some of the patchwork we've done on them, so we really.
Some of those people are still around, and they work for other companies or own other companies, and we should pay attention to that when the bid cycle goes out. I don't care if people say, no, you can't do that. Yeah, if you have bad process, bad, bad experience, sorry. I know that might be.
Acknowledge.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, we, we have to make sure that we're getting quality work for it all, and we have that fiscal responsibility to our towns.
Boy, I wasn't able to make that last meeting, but is there anything that needs to be done before the winter hits on sections of the?
We have companies coming in, we're getting our three quotes, and as we speak, so we'll have, do you want to?
The answer is yes.
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 Yeah, in a short, in, in a thing, but we.
Sometimes we have a plan for, for this critical, you take care of right.
Then the next two weeks.
To stop damage, to continue to deal with our roofs, and then when they work them in, did products in areas where we need to address immediately, and so they, we have three, I think there's going to be two or five, I just, to look at that, to see what do we need to do, what we need right now to make an effect, to stop damage. And then, the next plan is like, how do we, how do we implement that going forward? And I, after our presentation, it's all things that everybody has the same understanding of what's going on. You know, I just went into when they asked about how they're treating this condition, they said, did you have to shovel off the years of all the snow, stains, day? He said they're finding tremendous roof failures from that, from damage, from damage that was done trying to save your building.
And it sounds like passing the buck to me.
So I think, I think we're getting internal damage is the issue, be it the woodshop or the gym floor, basketball court.
Score.
I mean, if we just want to wait and, and try and pursue legal means or whatever else we want to do, that's not going to fix the infiltration problem. I think this is kind of, this isn't a permanent solution, we're, we're looking out with three bids, if my understanding is correct. We just want to protect the assets we have, and do what is best we can, so we don't sit here in January and say, oh, there's no leak, and then April storm, oh, roof blows out, there's no leak. We want to get through, so we can figure out a safer, a longer process of how to address what parts that are going to, you know, have problems, be it the library leak or whatever is possible. A lot of our many parts are somewhat vulnerable, in my interpretation, what I've heard from Yale and from the staff here.
A couple of years ago, we did an envelope study of things that were going wrong, and one key thing that rang to me is all the things that are wrong, every year you put off doing it, it's going to multiply having to do it times ten. So, do you want to spend a million now, or do you want to spend ten million next year? So, that, just use it right, same, but that is.
And, and the, the one thing I'll say is, administration took the envelope study and distilled it down into a matrix, and broke out the status of everything that was identified in the envelope study, so we can share that with the committee during the next meeting as well, so, because I, I didn't want to see that being more of a, a word document lost in, with some of these bigger things, we need to make sure that everything identified there is being addressed as well.
There's quite a few new people here that weren't here at the time, and that rang very serious, that multiplying, not multiplying it by double, multiplying it by eight, each year you put it off.
Yeah.
So, something to think about.
So again, if we need to have a safer meeting, we can. If Chris, Paula and I put our heads together and just summarize some of the information from the last meeting, that would not be a violation of open meeting law, because it would only. would only be three of us, so we could also work it that way. So Paula, I'll leave it up to you and I'll be available for whatever decision you have. All right. School start conference?
Basically, I've tried to stay abreast of the subject matter. We all know that right now, it's not feasible for the school system.
Treasuries you reported?
That one too, okay. There were three warrants that went around, one, two of them on a regular day-to-day, a And there was one payroll that went around and that was $892,897.95. And the grand total of the three of them is $954,717.9.
Thank you very much. All right. Union 31?
We probably have a meeting scheduled about February.
All right. Very good. And are there any single signature warrants?
Between November 8th and November 9th, Eric Crum, Laura Chilton and Chris Eklund came in to sign warrants for us. They signed 16 vendor warrants for $121,744.67. One payroll warrant of $797,732.99. For a total of $1,818,878.6.
Thank you, Christine. So we are in the middle of Hanukkah, so I'd like to say shalom and happy Hanukkah to our friends of the Jewish faith and I would like to wish Merry Christmas. And I make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation strategy referred to the eight employees collected bargaining pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, Sub 3.
Mr. Chair, before you go into executive session, I have two quick, I just wanted to, one question and one quick report.
If you'd second my motion.
I will second it.
Then you can start your discussion.
Wanted to hold it over. One quick just note, and I think Michaela knows about this, but last week I hosted the Silver Lake Robotics Club. Is that correct? Class?
It's a club.
Yeah.
But there is a... There's a lot of an event study.
Yeah, true. Down at Woods Coalitionographic Institution and we brought them through several labs and got to see the ship and a bunch of other stuff. And I'd say that they were an extremely respectful group of students. They only broke one thing, it's good.
And it was for record.
And it was low value and it was actually kind of funny because I took them into this pretty very expensive program of ours and I said, don't touch anything. And then the tour guide who runs it comes out and he goes, oh, you can touch anything you want. I'm like, no, no. I just told him not to touch anything. But they were very respectful and I'm happy to have them down and Matt Mall brought them down and thank God for that van that you all have. That's super helpful to be able to bring them down, so happy to do that. And then the other quick thing I have is just a question. So my first go-around, I attended the conference, the mask conference to, really to get my training completed because they offer it there, but there were a lot of other sessions that were really an interesting topic that, you know, you can't split your time, so you kind of pick and choose. There were a few other folks might have gone to portions of it. And I just was wondering if there is a process that we have in place that we can sort of peer learn because I'd like to hear about sessions the other people went to and what they learned and I don't want them to just kind of take it on their own and not share it with us, so I'm sort of wondering how that happens.
So we can make that part of new business and we can just debrief on some of the sessions from the joint conference down in Hyannis and we can look at the agendas in the upcoming meetings and seeing the meat of those meetings.
Yep.
But if that's something that you're interested in, as long as we could keep it, you know, to summaries of three to four minutes maybe?
I just wanted to say the earthshatter people learned about that was newer different.
Some of those presentations done other places, too?
So some of the presentations that MASC puts on down there are done at other times, but a lot of them are actually superintendents and school committees and teachers and directors of technology and specialty who come there just for that day. They're supposed to put their materials online, but again, once they leave the conference lots of times, those things don't get uploaded.
I'd like to suggest that next year, the meeting that followed the MASC conference, we put it on the agenda and ask those of us who go, I mean, when a school district pays for teachers to attend professional development, there's always an expectation that they'll bring that back to their colleagues. And I am really appreciative that the district pays for us to go to the conference and so I think it would be fair for us to bring back even just, I went to these sessions, you know, here's one thing I learned. So Lisa, maybe we could put that on the agenda for next year, following the conference.
Yep, that's a great idea.
Come back with this.
I mean, we could do it next time too for this year, but...
To be honest, the reason I didn't think of it is for years, not many of us went, you know?
They had some really valuable sessions, I mean, that I would have liked to, you guys walk by the board, I'm like, oh, I want to know about that or, you know?
And I bet you amongst all of us who went, there's probably eight or nine of them that we could brief on.
Sure.
Okay. So, no further discussion. To go into executive, do we need a roll call vote? All right. Paula?
To go into executive session, not to come back or come back into public just to...
Yeah, we'll adjourn from there.
Okay, all right. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Happy holidays.
No, we're kicking them out.
Happy holidays.